Adequate notice. Whoops.
It's okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February twenty twenty five through January twenty twenty six. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January eighth, twenty twenty five. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January seventeen twenty twenty five edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calendar. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeen, twenty twenty three. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations that have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally when the time comes should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. Countdown clock on your screen will help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Ms. Philip, will you call the roll, please?
Immer? Nat, you're muted.
I am here.
Thank you. Ms. Cappizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mayor Frida?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka? Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Pearl Mutter? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Announcements? The announcements from staff or board members? Mr. Lesko?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, members of the board and members of the public. I wanted to give an announcement that at the board's next meeting on the seventeenth, you'll be hearing, or holding hearing, I should say, about the environmental resource inventory. It's a document that we'll be discussing to potentially adopt as an appendix of the master plan, and it was last updated in twenty ten. I don't know if it was ever adopted into the master plan from then, but it certainly was created at that point. And it is a recommendation of the current plans, conservation, open space, and recreation element to adopt a new environmental resource inventory and include it as part of the master plan. The key word here is inventory with this document. The ERI provides information to identify environmental resources and, you know, allow decision makers to make decisions on them. It does not necessarily create policy, because that's already been done in the master plan's elements. So we'll send it out tomorrow to give you more time to review the document than usual. But again, going back to it being an inventory, it's about one hundred and seventy-one pages, but many of them are, you know, four pages of charts on the soil types in Princeton. Things of that nature, more so than than any sort of policy or recommendations or things like that. At the meeting on the seventeenth, Clarkane Hints will be here to present the document, so don't worry if you don't get a chance to read the whole thing, or you need a little guidance during it. They will present it as as usual, or as we do with the master plan, and there's a familiarity with Clarkane Hints, obviously. And you'll see the design of the document is very similar to the master plan, but otherwise, our engineer and department and open space manager really worked with them on this. So just wanted to give a heads up on that, and that'll be the reason why we send out the agenda and this document tomorrow instead of next Friday like we normally would.
Okay, so there's nothing else on the agenda?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right. Good.
There might, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, there might be minutes and things like that, but no applications.
Okay, all right, great. So probably be a good idea to resend the agenda a week from tomorrow as people are accustomed to getting it, you know, the Friday before meetings, but both times is fine, of course.
Yep.
And Madam Chair, just so you know, I am going on vacation, so I will not be doing that next week.
All right, enjoy your time off.
Thank you.
We'll make sure the board gets it, though, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any other announcements? I just want to announce it's great to be back. Great to see everybody. Subcommittee reports. We have a report from Landscape Committee.
Right, so we had a Landscape Committee on April first reviewing seventy seventy-four Witherspoon Street. CRX Associates, I think it's called, and we, do I have to get into what we discussed, or just say that we resolved everything? And recommended to move forward?
I think it makes sense. This is, by the way, the MoMo building right near the corner of Paul Robeson Place and Witherspoon. And since we did give a lot of attention to the street tree issue, the street trees were recommended by the Shade Tree Committee after our board meeting, so the board did not see their full their report. But they recommended trees, and we ultimately, street trees, I mean, we ultimately decided not to require street trees, the the I don't mean to steal your thunder, Julie.
No, it's all right. I mean, I definitely think we we did consider that issue for a long time and felt that the space was too narrow and too compromised, as well as the evergreen buffer that was recommended between the site and the small parklet. That was also considered, but ultimately, we decided that would not be beneficial to either the municipality or the applicant. So we decided not to require that. I think those were the two major deviations from the recommendations. We did go over plant lists and intentions for the planters and other greenery on the site. But as I recall, those two were the main issues. Also, at the dumpster and recycling, because it's a wall, it wasn't really appropriate to put landscaping in front of that. So we did not recommend that as well.
Right, and that driveway going back to the dumpster is not used for parking at all. And I just want to note that the sidewalk on Witherspoon in front of this building is particularly narrow compared with everywhere else along Witherspoon between Paul Robeson Place and Nassau Street and and the the applicant, as the board may recall, envisioned and plans for outdoor dining, and there just was not room for those trees. So I don't mean to belabor the point, but it was it was not, you know, not a slam dunk of a call, but we did talk about it for quite some time.
And in terms of that evergreen screen separating the the project from the parklet, and the decision, as Julie said, was that we would not go forward with it, didn't think it was a good idea. But wasn't part of the condition related to that, that there'd be interaction between the developer and the municipal officials as to possible improvements to the park itself?
Yes, especially that embankment between where the big tree is, it's a big London plane tree, and the driveway back to the to the dumpster area, which the applicant may use at some point for public gatherings, the same way that the Arts Center uses its driveway for public gatherings occasionally, so yeah, it just seemed like separating with the screen was not a good thing to do, but that improving that embankment and making sure that it was tidy and attractive was in everybody's interest, and the applicant readily agreed to that.
And the and the committee agreed with the proposal for the front for the front facade of the building and the plantings on it, where there'd be kind of a living wall, a living facade.
Right, and there's a green roof as well.
Yes, right.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Julie. I talked ten times deeper than you did, but.
Clear that up.
Okay. No other committee reports, correct? Yeah. So on to minutes, we have minutes from a special meeting held on April eleventh of last year. Are there any questions or suggested edits? And if not, would someone like to move those minutes?
I'll move them, Julie.
Moved by Julie Cappizoli, seconded by Mr. Cohen, I saw your hand first. Call the roll, please, Ms. Philip.
I don't know if it's necessary for the minutes.
Okay, I've been away too long. Call the roll for the resolutions, but not the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
No abstaining.
I know, sorry. Great. Onto resolutions. We have PIP Commercial LLC. This was a major site plan at forty forty-two North Tulane, file number P twenty-four twenty-four dash five-one-one P. Any comments or suggestions related to this resolution? And if not, would someone like to move it? Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Thank you. Call the roll, please, Ms. Philip.
Ms. Cappizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next resolution is for RB Homes Builders LLC. This was a minor site plan with variance at fourteen North Harrison Street, file number P twenty-four twenty-four dash five-two-one PM. Any questions or suggestions? And if not, would someone like to move this? Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. McGowan. Thank you. Call the roll, please, Ms. Philip.
David, you were definitely there for the meeting. Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know how I missed that. I'm sorry.
I remember it well.
Okay, did I miss anyone else? Julie, were you in attendance?
I am not remembering this one too well.
Okay, good, okay. And I don't have Nat down either, Nat, fourteen North Harrison. I'm so sorry. Thought I took it from the minutes. Okay, I'm just gonna read from what I have in front of me. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe the next item on the agenda, the concept plan, is being held or carried or otherwise not heard tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Lesko?
That's correct, Madam Chair. It will be tabled to a future meeting at the request of the applicant, and there will be new noticing at the time. Either way, there's no need to take jurisdiction for a concept review, so just if any members of the public are here to hear the concept review on Mount Lucas, that will not happen tonight. You're more than welcome to stay to hear about some signage at the shopping center, but just be aware that that other application will not occur tonight. The other concept plan, excuse me, will not occur tonight.
Okay, good, thank you. So we will hear an application from Princeton Eden's, a continued application from Princeton Eden's LLC. This is preliminary and final major site plan with variances at three oh one North Harrison Street. File number P twenty-four twenty-four dash five oh six P. I see you, Mr. Letizia. I would ask Mr. Lesko and, yes, the applicant's witnesses, you can turn on your cameras now, and when the time comes, we'll swear everybody in at once, but I would like for Mr. Lesko and Mr. Weissman to to talk a little bit before we start hearing from the applicant. Justin?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Jerry, I don't think I need to be sworn in again.
No, this is a continuation. You do not.
Yep, thank you. So as has been said a couple of times now, this is a continuation of the application you first heard for signage at the Princeton Shopping Center in early November. Note that Mayor Frida and Mr. Taylor have certified in writing that they watched the video from then, so they will be able to participate and vote. Because this is a continuation from November, and you all know where the shopping center is, I'm going to do my introduction a little differently than usual and focus more on the content than on the location. In November, Eden's, the owner of the shopping center, asked or requested variances to allow for three types of signs. The first type were facade signs for individual businesses. The second were for three freestanding directory signs, and the third was for one shopping center and retailer identification sign. There were additional variances that I'll get into later, but these are the three general types of signs that were proposed. At that November meeting, the application was bifurcated, and the board approved the facade signs for individual businesses, so we won't be talking about those tonight. The board had questions about the other signs and requested more information in the resolution of approval, which allowed the facade signs. This was summarized in our joint staff memo from March thirty-first, and that's what I'll summarize a bit here. I apologize to the board that our staff memo was finalized only earlier this week, but we only received the revised application materials last week. So the proposal tonight is for the three freestanding directory signs, the one shopping center and retailer identification sign, and a newly proposed electrical transformer that you didn't see last time. Getting into the signs first, I'd like to share my screen to show the applicant's it's sheet, detail sheet CO five from the applicant submitted site plan. Jerry, do we need to make this exhibit if it's from their site plan?
No.
No, okay, thanks. I'll zoom in in a minute, but I think seeing all four of these right now will be helpful. The shopping center and retailer identification sign is in the upper left. The other three are the directory signs. You can see the two directory signs to the right are identical in size. The third directory sign is larger, and this is the one that would be located near the shopping center entrance at Valley Road near McCaffrey's. The other two would be near the Walgreens and near where the new road to Turf Hune is proposed on the other side of McCaffrey's. You'll probably know.
Justin, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the the lower left signage is visible to the incoming vehicles coming off of or crossing Harrison or coming off of Harrison. Is that the one you mean?
That's correct, yep. So when you make that turn in directly between you and McCaffrey's as the driver.
Okay.
So the, you'll notice the design of the directory signs has changed since the last meeting. One notable way, and I'll zoom in now, it's gonna be a little blurry for a second, and then it should clear up. One notable way is that they now include messaging on the rear of the sign with a thank you for visiting message alongside the logos of the shopping center and Eden's. This will require additional variances, so now related to the directory signs, we're looking at variances for sign area of about thirty square feet, where eight square feet is allowed for the smaller ones, and forty-eight square feet where eight is allowed for the larger one, and that variance would be for both sides now. There are also variances requested for the max height of five feet on the smaller ones, as they're about five foot nine in height. And let's stay on these directory signs for a second. What our ordinance currently currently allows is four freestanding directory signs in the SC zoning district that the shopping center is in. And those are required to be located within the courtyard or a passageway leading there, too. This, I believe, refers to the the freestanding signs with maps of the stores in places like near the new Starbucks or by the arch that leads to lily pies, kind of like what you see in a mall, you know. This zoning requirement for directory signs is crafted to direct people on foot around the shopping center. You know, you're not gonna see that sign from your car and know where Pizza Star is. It's, you're gonna have to walk up and look for it. So after hearing the applicant's testimony, the board should consider if the if the applicant meets the variance proofs to allow these larger, more audio auto-oriented signs, or if the board finds that they do not, if this is a more appropriate question for council to decide by changing the requirements of the SC zone. Additionally, the board requested more information about the exact location and orientation of these signs, as well as some changes to the locations and the graphics, particularly which way the arrows were pointing, if you remember the last meeting, as well as more information on the size of the letters and their visibility based on traffic conditions. And the applicant should have their experts speak to these items, and I expect that they will. Moving on to the shopping center and retailer identification sign, the larger one. This sign is pretty similar to what you saw in November, and it's proposed to be near where Nomad Pizza is, that green area. I'll show in a second. It remains that this type of sign is not contemplated in our signage ordinance, and it requires a variance to allow the sign in general. Our ordinance allows for one shopping center identification sign of up to sixty-four feet in area with a maximum height of six feet, and it would have to be set back five feet. This sign is located at the Valley Road entrance that we were just talking about to the shopping center, where it says Princeton Shopping Center. There is also an identification sign near the Walgreens that has since been installed with the logo of the shopping center and the Avalon Apartments back from when the board reviewed and approved those Avalon Apartments a couple of years ago. Additionally, a variance would be required for internal illumination of this sign, which I should note is double-sided. The board had questions in November about the size of the letters, as well as the graphics, as it did with the other signs, but particular to this one, the board had questions about what the sign will look like at night with that illumination, and where exactly the sign will be, and what effect that will have on trees in the area proposed. The applicant has since confirmed that those that two trees would need to be relocated. Going back to the signs illumination, staff was not provided enough information to determine if it exceeds the maximum permitted light intensity and light trespass allowed by our ordinance. The applicant shall provide that testimony, as well as testimony to determine if an additional variance would and could be granted related to that illumination and the trespass and intensity.
Illumination.
So Carrie, never mind. I would also ask the board to consider, after the applicant's testimony, if it is necessary to have three individual identification signs on North Harrison, this proposed one, if it was approved, as well as the existing two, to identify where the shopping center is. And lastly, a new transformer is proposed, which you can see on sheet CO three. And I will zoom out a little. This is the existing conditions and the proposed conditions, and this is the transformer layout plan of the applicant's site plan. The transformer is proposed where this T is, in that green area, green grass area right by where the identification sign is proposed, and Nomad Pizza would be off the screen here a little bit. The existing transformer, or my lights just turned out. There is an existing, I gotta start moving. There is an existing transformer located to the north of this proposed location on a concrete pad in a parking medium, and that would be a median, and that would be removed if this was approved to go in this location. A variance would be required, as this is proposed to be within the fifty-foot required setback from a date adjacent residential zones as its twenty-nine-feet setback. The applicant should testify why this location is needed, though in preliminary conversations with the applicant's professionals, it seems that this location is a fair one based on PSCNG's requirements, as well as the needs of the shopping center in, you know, the twenty twenties for a nineteen fifties-built building. The board may, however, wish to discuss screening, though, around there are fourteen bollards surrounding the transformer, so you may want to discuss that. And the only other comment that we had in our memo was whether it was appropriate or not to have a thank you for visiting message on the one directory sign near the Walgreens, or if that would cause confusion with the do not enter sign there, because if you remember, that's just one way in, and you cannot enter to go out. Madam Chair, I would like to hand it to Mr. Weissman to see if he has anything to add. Otherwise, I'm here for questions, and I look forward to the applicant's testimony.
Okay, thank you. Dan Weissman?
Good evening, Madam Chair and everybody. Thank you. Just a one point of clarification. Mr. Lesko had pointed out that the sign area for each of the directory signs, the values are correct. The two smaller directory signs are thirty, approximately thirty square feet, and the larger one is forty-eight square feet. That only entails the front face of the sign. The signage on the rear, as it does not mirror the same signage, is considered a separate sign. So separate variance relief is required for each of those three signs on the rear of those D one, D two, and D three signs. Regarding, Justin had touched on the potential variance relief for light trespass and light intensity. Section T ten B dash three one seven regards light intensity at a lot line, which is limited at fifty-foot Lamberts. And section T ten B dash three one seven point one E is regarding light trespass at a lot line and is limited within the shopping center at zero point seven foot candles. Again, the applicant has provided some information regarding the foot candles and lumens at the sign. However, there's not sufficient information to determine what those values are at the lot line adjacent to the sign. So the applicant, we had discussed with the applicant, I understand they had worked on this between when they provided the additional information for the hearing. So we're just asking the applicant to provide some additional testimony to justify if variance relief is required. The applicant is also asked to provide expert testimony on the size of the letters that are proposed within each of the signs, and how their visibility, what the visibility is based on traffic conditions within the shopping center and along North Harrison Street.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, there were a number of things in the in the memo that were sort of red flags for me, so I do hope that the applicant addresses all of those matters that were raised in the in the staff comments and the planning comments. Also, in addition to the letter size, which hasn't been talked about yet, I would like to understand from the applicant why it's necessary to relocate two trees when they seem to be a distance away from where the transformer is, and I realize that might relate to digging or something, but I I wanna understand why. Anything from from you, Mr. Bridger?
No, I think they've covered everything. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Letizia? Welcome back.
Hello. For the record, Tom Letizia, attorney representing Princeton Eden's LLC, owner of the Princeton Shopping Center. Jerry, you may have said this, but perhaps I missed it. perhaps I missed it. Uh, we did provide notice of this, uh, hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not turn to him to ask that, that's, that's my bad.
Provided the necessary affidavit, so I believe the board does have jurisdiction to, uh. Thank you, Tom.
Yes, everything's in order.
Great, thank you both.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, I have a, a request. One of our witnesses is delayed. Uh, he's, he is our, uh, planner, uh, his testimony obviously is important because as noted by your staff, there's a number of variances that are being sought with this signage, so I'm asking if the board would be willing to recess for about ten minutes or so. Uh, to allow my planner, uh, to, to join this, uh, virtual, uh, meeting. So, ma- You get an early recess. Uh, if so, I, we, we were expecting you were gonna, uh, hear the concept, so we thought we were gonna be a little bit later.
Yeah.
But I know things change, it's, that's our problem, not yours, but.
Yeah, um. There, there are no other witnesses that you want to?
No, I have other witnesses, but, but you know, I like to do this the right way, that is our, our expert, our planner should hear all the testimony from our witnesses.
Okay, yeah, sure.
That's why I'm asking for the, uh, for the short recess.
Okay, um, we will take ten minutes and if they're, um, not here at that time, we're, we will, um, continue to another day.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, thank you, Ms. Philip, uh, Mr. Letizia. Go right ahead.
Okay, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and again, um, apologies of, for the delay. Uh, both Justin and Dan gave a very thorough background uh, for, for the board, and I do not plan to, uh, repeat any of that information. Uh, you are all familiar with the Princeton Shopping Center, it has gone through some, uh, recent upgrades in terms of, uh, building facade upgrades and, um, new tenant signage, which, uh, this board approved back in, uh, in the fall of last year. Uh, I think you will agree that it's, it's looking, uh, very, uh, attractive. So this is, I would call chapter two of the, uh, application that was filed for, uh, new signage, so tonight is, the focus is on site or freestanding signage. And there are essentially two types. There are three directory signs, uh, being proposed. And then there is a new uh, site ID monument sign to be, uh, located out on North Harrison Street, so that's the signage. And then I was, as was noted, uh, by, uh, by Justin. Uh, there is now a proposed, uh, new transformer out near, uh, the road. Uh, and because of its location within a, a setback, it does require a variance and therefore it's part of this, it's been made part of this uh, application. Normally, we, we wouldn't have to go to the planning board for the placement of a, of a transformer. Uh, so we're gonna focus again on the freestanding signage and the transformer, and as was noted. There was requests for additional information from the board, uh, back in November. Um, related to this, uh, this signage, and we apologize for the, the long, uh, period of time. But we, we wanted to get it right, we wanted to pull together all the, uh, information that was being requested and then also uh, bring in some experts to address the questions that were, uh, raised particularly with respect to, uh, lighting, uh, because the ID sign will be internally illuminated. A- as well as the, uh, the size of letters and the visibility of those letters uh, from, uh, customers who are, uh, arriving, uh, to the center. In terms of the variances, I think they uh, Justin and Dan have, have summarized them. Uh, with respect to their directory signs, it relates to their size and their height. At least for two of them, the, the one directory sign, uh, does comply with the height requirement for a directory sign. Uh, but it does need a, um, a area of variance. And then there was, um, this discussion about a, what, what qualifies as a, as a separate sign is on the backside of these directory signs, uh, Edens has, uh, decided to put a thank you message, uh, to its customers that are leaving, uh, the shopping center. And since, um, that's different than the information on the, uh, the opposite side of the sign. Per your ordinance, that's considered a separate sign. And because there are no regulations related to that type of sign, we need a variance for those, uh, for that side of the director's sign. I know I'm getting into the weeds, but that is, uh, the result of, uh, of this proposal. And then, um, the, uh, the last sign has to do with this identification sign, monument sign. That, uh, variance again relates to the type of sign. And, um, this, the square footage of the sign is proposed to be ninety-nine a square feet. There was a, uh, a reference in the staff report to a different size, uh, basically a double, a hundred and eighty-seven square foot sign. Uh, that was based on an assumption by your staff that uh, the, the letters or the, the, the messages would be different, uh, because this is a two-sided sign, so that would be, um. Again, if the messages are different from one side to the other, it's considered a double sign or a separate sign. But as we will explain in our testimony, the information on this, uh, ID sign will be the same on both sides, so it's treated as a single sign. And that means it's just the area of one side, and again, the variance we'll be seeking is for ninety-nine a square feet, not one hundred and eighty-seven square feet. I wanted to, I want to make that clarification. Uh, so we have had a chance to review the memorandum and we, we will address the comments um, in our, in our testimony. And then with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our, um, our witnesses and, uh, Jerry, do we wanna swear them in all at once? I think that's how you do it these days, right? Okay, so, uh, we have Ryan Leeming.
Good evening.
All right, we have Larry Gliozzi. Uh, Glenn Fassman and John McDonough. So if you can all put on your, uh.
If you can raise your right hand.
And raise your right hand.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give be the truth? Well, affirm, if you can kind of go around in some fashion and state your full name and spell your last name.
Uh, Ryan Leeming, L E E M I N G.
Glenn Fassman, F A S M A N.
Thank you.
Larry, please. Larry, you, you are on, uh, mute. Lu- Lu Mark?
Yeah.
There you go. Okay, go ahead, Larry.
Hi, Larry Gliozzi, L A R R Y G L I O Z Z I.
G L I O Z Z I?
Correct.
And Mr. McDonough?
Tom McDonough.
Can you spell your last name, John, please?
My name is spelled M C capital D O N O U G H.
Thank you. So my first witness is Mr. Ryan Leeming. Now, Ryan, you testified, uh, previous hearing on this application. And, uh, can you just remind, um, the boards, because we do have some new board members here, uh, and what is your, uh, position, please?
Sure, um, Ryan Leeming with Edens, I'm the Vice President of Development for Edens.
And the Princeton, uh, Shopping Center is in your, uh, portfolio that you have responsibility for, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, uh, you're very familiar with the shopping center as well as the, uh, this proposed signage, uh, plan, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so why don't you, um, provide the board, uh, with, um, the thinking, uh, behind this, uh, new site signage. And, uh, I believe, uh, the chair also had a couple of questions about relocation of trees that perhaps you can, uh, address and also explain uh, the location of the, uh, new transformer. Please. Okay. And I think we have some exhibits, so, uh, feel free to pull up. Pull up those.
They come up?
They do, I see them, so let's identify this, uh, first.
Yep, this is page C dash O one, um, which was included in our site plans. This is prepared by Boulder Engineering.
And again, Jerry, I don't know if we need to mark this, but, uh, it's up.
I think so.
Okay.
So, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board for having us again. Um, I'll try to be brief, um, try to get to questions, uh, as soon as we can here. Just a quick reminder for those, uh, from the last meeting and as members, um, this application, chapter two, as Tom defined it, is, I would say, the final piece uh, of our redevelopment project in Princeton Shopping Center, which, uh, with exception of this signage here, has been fully completed. So, when we started this project, we started to think about signage. The board was gracious enough to approve all the facade signs to finish the facade renovation project last year. But one thing that we've always thought about and we hear from our retail partners, we hear from new customers, um, as silly as it may be. The center could use a little bit of help in, in letting people know how to get around and where businesses might be located. And so that led us to this application. As Tom said, we are proposing a new identification sign along North Harrison, which is here near Nomad Pizza. And then we have the three directory signs, one here, D one behind Walgreens at the first entrance off North Harrison. A two sign at the entrance of Valley Road. And the D three sign here, which originally we had thought this would be a great sign in a different orientation. Uh, to help people as they come around this corner and continue along McCaffrey's parking lot to let folks know whom is on the Grover Park side of the center, based upon some comment and rethinking about this sign, we're holding this sign, uh, now to speak in, in concept to the way the other two signs do, and they are directly related to entering traffic to the shopping center. Uh, so we know there's, there's been some applications in town that showed this new road. If, if it ever does come, uh, we will be able to address that new entering traffic with a, with a wayfinding sign. So that is the revised thinking for the, the D three sign. In addition to all of this, the new piece, um, why we wanted to spend a little bit more time getting our material together, thank you for the continued patience is in working on a piece of scope at the shopping center and upgrading the electrical equipment. Uh, the electrical equipment in these two front buildings, buildings B and F. This building F directly behind Nomad Pizza, Starbucks on the end cap here, Pastiamo on the other end cap here. Uh, this also houses Orbis. And building F, which has Mia España, Bella Boutique, Lily Pies, some new retailers that are coming. Uh, the electrical equipment in these buildings is original to the shopping center. And in order to keep up with our leasing activity at the shopping center, we will be upgrading and replacing that, that power system entirely, uh, so we've been coordinating with P S E and G. And some new information that they gave us earlier this year is in working with them, they would need to bring a new transformer, so we're proposing that new transformer here in this grassy area. And the preference from working with P S E and G was the main power for the current transformer, which is not on this plan, but we have it on other plans, which we can show is actually located here today. The power comes into this power pole here, and the, the recommendation was keep it as close to the original equipment as possible. Uh, we felt like this grassy area was, was wide open, it was out of the way. Uh, so this is where we've landed it, or where we're showing it landed today.
Um, so, why wouldn't the tr- the new transformer? Why couldn't it go in the same location as the old one?
Uh, this new transformer is actually larger, uh, slightly larger than the existing, the existing transformer is much older, this newer one is has more stuff inside of it, it's more up to date, it also sits on a slightly larger concrete base. Uh, and it would not fit in this landscape island here, it's just slightly too large. So, the Princeton Shopping Center, you're all very aware of it, it's been around for a long time, it has a lot of retailers. Uh, now that our project is finished, we think the site signage is a great finishing touch to help people navigate around the site. Um, especially, you know, this entrance here as you come in, now with the introduction of the Avalon Building. This building is now up, people are now living in there, uh, again, as silly as it may be. We've all seen this plan many, many times, a lot of people don't realize that this road connects to the Grover Park side. And so we felt like this sign is warranted in a way to make people aware. If you're heading to these retailers, please take a right here. Uh, a lot of folks feel that just by how this looks, if you're new to the Princeton Shopping Center, that this road only serves Avalon, uh, which is not true. This D two sign here, coming into Valley Road, again, as we spoke about it our last, um, hearing. People come in, especially if you're new to the shopping center, and I feel like most folks will gravitate to the front parking lot. And we oftentimes hear that it's really tough to find a parking space sometimes when the shopping center is busy. And so we think this sign will help navigate, circulate folks looking for Ace Hardware, looking for Conquer Pet, Metropolis, Blue Bears. Some of the other retailers on the Grover Park side will help them take that left and know that they can get back here, and there's a lot of ample parking always on the Grover Park side of the center. This one, as I said, we're holding for now, uh, to relate to any entrance, entrance traffic off of Turhim. Again, if someone would come in, there's a decision point, the sign would help direct them to the retailer that they wanted. The last piece of signage, the ID sign here. The Princeton Shopping Center is a large piece of property in Princeton. It has a lot of frontage along North Harrison. It currently has a previously approved sign here, the Walgreens entrance, which is brand new, it's been installed. And currently has an existing monument sign here at the Valley Road entrance. And now why this, while this entrance here is, you know, a right in, right out only. Doesn't really serve as much of a, I would say, as a main entrance as maybe this entrance here is the first entrance as you're coming from downtown. Or this entrance here, as it's out of light. It's a great midpoint for the frontage along North Harrison to introduce a sign to make people aware of the Princeton Shopping Center in whichever direction they're traveling. It's also a great opportunity to introduce some of our retailer partner names. Um, again, helping people with awareness, how to get around the site, letting folks know whom is here. If they're new to Princeton, new to Princeton Shopping Center, they're looking for McCaffrey's. McCaffrey's name would be proposed on this sign, so just providing that awareness that they've arrived at the Princeton Shopping Center. Helping break up that frontage a little bit more, uh, feeling like a bit, a bit of an amenity to the frontage. to the frontage and the curb appeal along North Harrison.
Orion, there was a question about relocation of trees. Can you address them?
Would love to. And like Justin, my lights went off too. So this plan here, this is C zero three from our site plan set prepared by Bowler. These are some zoom in, blow up detailed versions of the existing condition, you can see that existing transformer. And you can see the new transformer, and you can see the new sign proposed here within the setback. And when we studied this, you know, without the transformer, our last application, we didn't have the transformer. So we had a little bit more room in this area. With the transformer, we've shifted the sign location a little bit, and it's in between these two existing smaller trees here. And so just to avoid any conflict, any damaging of the tree during any digging, anything like that, we felt like relocating this tree over here, you can see it here, in line with the existing tree line along North Harrison. And then relocating this tree slightly planned north to be in the landscape island. Uh there is an existing tree up in this zone here, I believe. Uh so we felt like that complemented that a little bit. And it's an ability to save those trees. We do show on the plan, we show relocated or replaced, obviously, we were wel- we welcome feedback from the board. Uh but it would be our intent to save those trees, maintain those trees.
So the reason for relocating the trees is really to provide better visibility for the signs, is that correct?
And yes, visibility was one thought. Uh but also, you know, any potential harm to the tree by installation of the sign or any conflict with roots or anything like that that exists. Uh but if you can see this sign here, you know, it would be, you know, right in here. Felt a little bit crowded in there with trees, a little bit of a conflict.
Can you testify to the size of those trees? You said they were small. How how big or small are they?
Um, I believe they're I think they're a three inch caliper. Last time I checked, they were much smaller than, for example, this tree is a very large, mature, uh much older tree. Uh I believe these are like three inch, very sort of smaller, three inch caliber. We can confirm that, we'll absolutely confirm that. Uh but they're much smaller. Uh these are not as mature as a lot of the existing trees along North Harrison.
Orion, maybe you can now turn to the design of the signs that we're proposing and talk a little bit.
Yeah.
About the design.
So I had the individual sheets here, these were all included uh as part of our, uh these were all included on, if I have the sheet here, but I have the sheet. These four sign drawings were all included, uh I believe it's C dash zero four of our site plans, we showed them all on one page, uh but these are just the individual pages that I can reference. So this is um sign ID one, this would be the main shopping center identification sign uh near Nomad Pizza. Uh this would have shopping center identification on it, on the base. It is an eighteen inch stone base. Uh if you've seen the new Princeton Shopping Center Avalon sign, it is exactly the same height and size of that sign. Uh the stone base mimics the same stone base. The spacing between the cap and the panel, all all unique and identical, and it's, that was done on purpose. Uh we really wanted to follow in the same family of that sign and keep a consistent size, materiality, color. The panel or the the box here that is going to be created, uh right now, we show it with sixteen retailer panels. We felt that at the size of this sign, keeping it under the six foot height requirement, um we felt like a four inch letter was an appropriate size to maintain visibility, legibility. But also sort of be as small as it can be and not be overwhelming, overpowering, distracting. This panel here, this top piece would be internally illuminated. The proposal is that only the letters of the tenant names would have that internal illumination shining through. For example, the Princeton Shopping Center name would be halo illumination or indirect illumination as all of the shopping center signs are today. So that would remain in uh constant with those signs. The the key difference is that these would be internally illuminated. And the main reason for that is in going with the four inch letter height, uh those letters would just be too small to be able to reverse illuminate through halo. And so we went with what we thought was the next best thing, uh which was internal illumination. One thing I'll hit on, and and we have the team from Loumark here, Larry's here, they can certainly speak in more detail about it. Last time at our hearing, there was a question about materiality or any any sort of new technology or anything new that we were doing. And interestingly enough, the team at Loumark made us aware of a product which is called day-night acrylic. And what that is, is it's an acrylic that is tinted. And so during the day, the sign would look as you see it on on your page, we have some, we can go to as well. Uh the letters would read black, and even though those letters are solid black at night, they would shine white. So light would penetrate through that black acrylic, and they would illuminate white to be red uh at night. And the black acrylic helped filters that light. It controls that light. Glenn Fastman who's here is representing our lighting group, you know, he can certainly speak to illuminants, illuminants and all that much later. Uh but the day-night acrylic, if I may flip to something really quickly, is just a new technology that we're excited to use here.
And and um Ryan, sorry to interrupt, but I think this is a new plan. I don't think this has been submitted as part of our submission before, so we should mark this. So let's identify it, please.
Sure, this is um, this is a a product spec sheet from a manufacturer named Steel Art. Um it's from their manual for architectural signage pages thirty eight to thirty nine.
Um, excuse me for interrupting, but Mr. Bridger has his hand up, Derek.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just before we get away from the sign of the size or the size of the sign, staff was a little bit confused. If you look at the detail of the sign, it has interchangeable uh stored names on each side, and at the right-hand corner, you see what I assume would be the opposite side of the sign. Um it has a different format of names, it's not exactly the same. So we, if it's not the same on both sides, we would count it as
Right.
Two double-sided sign and, you know, it's twice the size of a the regular sign, so. Are are the names going to be the same on each side? It's kind of a difficult enforcement issue, it'd be a violation of an approved site plan, so I would just ask that the applicant speak to that, because um, you know, we're trying to figure out how to, to, you know, view this sign, so.
Yep, the intent is the names would be the same on both sides, the messaging would be the same on both sides, that's correct. Apologies for the confusion, Derek.
No, thank you.
So people viewing it from the other side of Harrison Street where they can't enter at that at at that entrance anyway. But I don't know, I that find that sort of confusing, maybe um maybe your planner or this, or somebody can testify to that later.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think in our mind at Edens, you know, again, meant to be a little bit of an amenity, curb appeal along North Harrison, provide awareness, provide, you know, provide some illuminance, provide some some signage, uh some landscape art, if you will. Uh not necessarily, you know, just try to distract uh drivers on the other way, you know, to sort of think or or say, you know, oh, can I enter here? How do I enter, you know? That was our intent.
Tom, I think we're up to A two, is that what your record show? I thought this was A one, I thought, because the other Okay. Yeah, the other plans are already part of our Yeah.
Yeah, okay, A one. Thanks, Tom.
Sure.
So I'll hit a little bit on um the illuminate, the illumination. So the day-night acrylic, which is the material we're using, we talked about it at our last hearing, uh the board requests a little bit more information on this. The left of this image is traditionally how you work with acrylic on signs. You have a piece of acrylic and then there's a perforated vinyl that sits on the face of that. And that perforated vinyl is what filters the light. And so during the day, the letter could be any color you want. But at night, the light would shine through the perforation. Whereas now, with the day-night acrylic, uh you just have one piece of acrylic that is light filtering. And so again, during the day, when it's not lit, you can have any color of letter, and then at night, you have a consistent white glow shining through, no matter the color. This is a real ethic.
So what is the color of the acrylic that the we're going to use?
We would have black letters.
And and that color matches the tenant uh facade signage, is that correct?
That is correct. About ninety-five percent of the tenant facade signs are black at the Princeton Shopping Center.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Lesko?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh Ryan, I I don't want to start getting nitpicky, but um on that cut sheet you just showed, I believe it shows the size range from six inches upwards, and you're proposing four inches. Are these the same, or is there something I'm missing?
Size range, yeah, this is just, I think, specification. Um this material, we can have Loumark speak to this, but this material can be custom manufactured.
Okay.
Um, so.
Thank you, yeah, if Loumark can comment on that, I I think that'd be helpful.
Yep, yeah, can be, yeah. Um so just staying on the day-night acrylic, as again, the board asked for some more details on this, whether helpful or not. The manufacturer of this product um has partnered with Mac, and Mac has started to roll out this material at a lot of their headquarters sites. Um so when you, when you look at this manufacturer's website, they sort of use the Mac partnership as a great way to showcase what's possible with this material. So this sign today, this is during the day, you can see that it's predominantly white and black, just like ours.
This will be a A two, uh Jerry.
Yep. Yeah.
And then when you go to nighttime, the inverse happens. So all of that black material illuminates white, and the white material stays dark in the night. And so you have a great consistency here, material.
And that'd be A three.
Yes.
So this is again that sign during the daytime. And then at nighttime. And the last thing I'll conclude with on this monument sign, a comment from the board, last time, we did have some renderings. They were sort of uh pictures of the sign, they were not renderings of the sign in place along the frontage. Now, this is a rendering of the shopping center that we had done uh prior to our project. So we put this sign in, and uh one thing, one difference just to point out here, uh we are showing sixteen retailer names on this. Uh at the time of this rendering, we were studying the idea of maybe having twelve. And so I think we want to uh maintain some flexibility around that, still maintaining the four inch letter height. But like if we wanted to have less panels on the sign, we certainly wanted to be able to do that. And so I'll show this, this can be A four. Is it A four? I have that right?
Yep.
Uh and so I'll zoom in here. As you can see, this would be the the sign during the day. And then this would be a nighttime rendering. Keep in mind, it is a rendering. But that is the intent. You can see the halo illumination outline around the Princeton Shopping Center, and the only thing that glows would be the letters of the sign.
Right, and that's A five.
A five, correct.
I have questions, but I'll save them for your lighting people.
Well, that's why we have them.
Yep.
Uh, any more questions of Mr. Leaming?
I don't know if we wanted to hit uh Dan at the hand.
Yeah, Mr. Weissman?
Thank you. Uh just one question, uh clarification between the rendering and the plan as shown, the rendering shows multiple lines uh per vendor panel, um but the plan shows individual lines with with the idea to be have just one row of line per individual vendor panel, um or would that be split up across multiple lines as shown here?
I think the the idea would be one. You know, this is again, we were studying this when we were doing the rendering, so we sort of looked at a few different options. The idea would be one row of words at four inches. And we would work with the retailer, if they had a very long name, we would try to work with them to come up with a way to identify that was that was appropriate.
Thank you.
Mr. Weissman or Mr. Lesko, or maybe Mr. Cohen or anybody, um what is the speed limit along um Harrison Street at that point?
Posted speed limit is thirty miles an hour.
Yeah. There were any other questions? I'd be happy to move quickly to the directory signs. If you'd like me to just explain those, the updates we made, why, and then happy to to stop.
Yes.
Okay, good, yeah, I don't.
Please.
Go back to the sign plants here. Which we included. So this is the D one sign, this is again to a reminder, right behind Walgreens in the landscape island there as you enter. And one of the points, uh this goes Mr. Cohen, uh some comments from the board last time were we had originally shown this sign just to be one directional, to to sort of focus everyone on who they need to take a right uh to go visit. And the comment was, let's also show whom can be focused on going left. So we've modified the design of this sign to show both directions with some with some retailer names on there. We also enhanced the design of this sign a little bit. I think if you remember, we had sort of picked picturesque signs. Comments was, let's really look at heights, let's look at letter heights, let's let's look at the arrows, let's really put some thoughtfulness into these signs. So we tried to do that with these signs, tried to give them a little bit more of design, make them a little bit more of a design element, tying with the colors of the shopping center, the font of the shopping center. And then one thing that that Edens is doing a lot more of is the thank you or the goodbye message at our properties. Uh we have it at a lot of our properties, we don't have it at all of them. We're trying to incorporate it wherever we can. And so that was the genesis of uh putting a thank you for visiting on the back of the sign. Uh the other piece of that is also that uh we don't love to have blank backs of signs wherever we can help it. We often find that, you know, the messaging does not make sense on the on the back, but maybe just having the shopping center logo or a thank you or what have you, uh is a great way to just infuse a little bit of fun into it, a little bit of placemaking.
Well, what's the point of having the Edens logo? If anything, it seems to me confusing. I could see people not familiar with the shopping center thinking, oh, this must be a store and I missed it, where is it?
Um, I think the point is just that, you know, we are the owners and stewards of the I think the point is just that, you know, we are the owners and stewards of the shopping center.
I know that.
Um, you know, nothing more. Something we've, you know.
Yeah. Seems to me advertising, but uh, be that a, oh, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Of course, of course. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thanks. Um, on on this sign, on the backside of the sign?
Mm hmm.
Since this is by an entrance only, I would wonder gauging the ability of people to drive these days, if this would encourage people to think this is also an exit driveway? And if it makes sense to put something that says exit with an arrow pointing them down to the next driveway, so people don't try to exit by this driveway?
Yeah, it's a good point.
Yep, I think it's a great point. Um, I think we can certainly look at that. I think the other piece of this is we did think about that. We said, let's keep it consistent for now. Let's get the board's feedback. Um, there is a crosswalk or a sidewalk that walks along that property too. So there is always the opportunity that someone is exiting the property walking. So this sign could speak to them as well. So that was another thought we had.
Um, Claudia Wilson Anderson?
Thank you. Uh, following up on Mayor Frieda's comment. Recently, when I was there, we were at the pediatrician at the backside, went around Avalon. Uh, you cannot go directly uh, past Walgreens to get out, but you can go around Walgreens and go past the uh, drive in, drive through pickup for Walgreens and exit that way. And it gets very confusing in there. I don't know if anybody else has experienced it, but there's a circle that you can go through to get out that one way entrance. Uh, because there is an exit there too. Um, is there something that you can do with signage to discourage driving around Walgreens to exit?
Um, yeah, we we could certainly, you know, something as simple as a sign that's, you know, Walgreens drive through pharmacy traffic only, or, you know, something to help dissuade that. Um, we happen to look at that. It's actually I never thought of that myself. So thank you for bringing that up.
Uh, Mr. Cohen, thanks, Claudia.
I just, I wanted Claudia to clarify a little bit because what it sounded like you were saying is if you go through the dark, the drive through.
And you can sneak out.
And then sneak out there, which is not supposed to be the case.
There are two driveways there. One is going through the drive through, but there's
Hey, I'm gonna go there now, because uh, yeah, yeah, I don't I don't think you're right. I don't think, I mean, that was a that was a little bit of a news to me too, because that, you know, you're not supposed to be able to I think this was all designed to send this this car back into this direction and back out. But people could, yeah, I guess they could make the maneuver illegally.
So I guess the point is we need additional signage there of some kind.
Left turn only or?
Yeah.
I'm wondering, but I'm I'm a
No exit. No exit, maybe.
All of the above. And and maybe maybe even some geometry to make it difficult to me, even more difficult to make a right turn there.
Uh, if I might add, I believe there is a sign uh, that says you can't make a right turn. Uh, I just know that because I get my prescriptions there. Um, and it it's never really occurred to me to make the right. So I believe there is a sign saying left turn only or something like that. So I mean, of course, if someone just disregarded that, then so be it. They'll probably disregard any sign.
A scoff law like Claudia.
I I do believe you can make the left turn there is what I what we ended up doing was coming on the uh, past the drive through, not in not in the drive through, it passed the drive through and going out and making a left turn there.
Right, correct, yeah. So and take a right turn there and exit from that driveway onto Harrison.
With Harrison going left.
It's a one way arrow in at that point. Um, so you would have to make a right onto the white to then make a right somewhere.
Just to, uh, I just did double check this off to the side here, but this this sign is a no right turn sign. And this sign is a one way sign pointing that way. So there's, there's, I would say, not a traffic engineer, but to the road roadway standard signage to alert people that you should not be
Be making a right.
Turning this way.
Yeah.
But the reality of what people want to do. So.
That's good to know.
One other question, if I may, um, before we go on to the other signs relating to the entrance near Nomad where the transformer is being moved. You said the transformer is larger than the existing transformer that's there.
Yes.
Is there going to be any screening around it? I don't have a sense of what it's going to look like there, but it looks like it's very close to the entrance.
Yeah, currently there's no landscape currently shown. So just for the for the court's benefit, I'm I'm on my CO three site plan that was submitted. This is the existing transformer. You can see this is the transformer here, this smaller box that sits on this pad here. And then this is the new transformer here, slightly larger. It sits on a slightly larger pad. And you know, the new standard um, today is the bollards, as you see. And so we did not propose any additional landscaping right now. This is a very treat area. There's a lot of grass. There's flower beds along here, so we did not just, we just did not want to necessarily add anything on top of the bollards. Uh, I did ask the question if we could landscape in lieu of bollards. Um, but I guess we cannot do that. That is a, that is a standard we cannot do. So that's what I was told.
How large is the transformer?
Um, get to mention. It props. So it's about a little bit less than five feet wide. I was gonna say it's probably about five feet by five feet. Five feet wide. Yeah, so it's a little bit less than than five feet uh, in one direction and five feet in the other direction. I believe it sits on a six foot by six foot concrete, a little bit like seven foot by yeah, a seven foot by seven foot concrete pad.
And how tall is it?
Also five feet.
Would it create any problems if landscaping in addition to the bollards wasn't sold?
Not that I'm aware of problems, not that I'm aware of. Think we would want to just be mindful of what that might be and not, you know, not make this area start to feel really more crowded.
Yeah, Ryan, Ryan, I would think you could uh, I know in a project that I was involved in not too long ago, we have landscaping literally right up against the transformer path. So I don't think you'd need to put the landscaping outside the ring of bollards. You could almost
Okay.
let the landscaping help hide the bollards, but I definitely would not remove the bollards, seeing how much traffic is in that parking lot.
Yeah.
But great tip.
I think Justin has a question. And Mr. Cohen.
Yes, sorry about that. Um, I was I was looking at the relocated trees again. Uh, for Lesko and then Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, I will have a comment later on the relocated trees.
Okay.
But um, I I just wanted to add to the conversation about the uh, uh, screening. Uh, we just had an application at the zoning board last Wednesday. Uh, one of the eating clubs had to put a transformer outside it and they were able to screen it uh, pretty effectively. Um, now, of course, to do that, you probably need six foot tall bushes if you really do not want to see it. Um, and at the eating club with its stark nature and the architecture of the building, uh, they they did enough uh, to make sure that it wouldn't be seen. I don't know if that's necessarily necessary here. Uh, but the board may want to consider some sort of screening, at least from the street. If not, uh, from all sides of the the uh, transformer itself.
Oh. Can I say something really quick before a few more questions on this topic of screening? I would also, I would also recommend for the board's consideration, you know, one thing is part of our project. We have partnered with the Arts Council on a whole lot more art at the shopping center. Hopefully you've seen some of it. And uh, fortunately or unfortunately, this is not the first time we've had to work with P S E and G putting equipment at our shopping center and then having to hide it. One of the retailers that moved into building F, there was a gas meter that needed to be relocated outside the building. We painted a mural on the building where that gas meter is and hid the gas meter inside the mural. Um, and so we could certainly, I offered that up, we could certainly look at, I've seen plenty of transformers and electrical boxes in many towns painted, you know, as pieces of art, so I could certainly offer that up as alternative.
That is a really interesting alternative and I'm I'm glad you're doing so much more with art. I've seen those transformers and they can be pretty cool. Uh, David?
Paint the bollards, right? It could kind of be this whole cool thing.
Thanks, David.
Yeah, I was actually gonna say, um, I think interspersing plantings with the bollards would have the there's, you know, there's desirable effect of both screening the transformer, but also screening the bollards, which are terribly attractive. You know, reserving the right to change my mind if the Arts Council comes up with a an awesome decorative approach to the transformer and bollards. And and the other thing, I just wanted to put a pin in, this is maybe for Dan Weissman's benefit more than anything is that because we're looking at a road diet for Harrison here. Um, relocating the cut through of the island over by the south driveway, which we were just talking about, might be an additional way to discourage uh, undesirable traffic patterns, right? Because I think we what we saw was that there is a cut through of the island. And if somebody exits there by the Walgreens, they can actually make a left turn, not that they're allowed to. But there's a way to make a left turn onto Harrison southbound, which I think um, is really undesirable. And so I would suggest that we should be moving that uh, cut pass through of the of the island as we redesign the road to help solve some of these issues.
Mm hmm.
Yep.
It's not not so much for the applicant, but
Yeah, good, really good point though, David. Thanks. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Leaming at this point? Okay, let's move on.
Ryan, I think you were gonna touch on the other two directory signs real quick.
Do them real quick. Uh, we talked about the D one and the messaging. Thank you for the comment. D two, this is the sign as you come in Valley Road. Uh, we showed this sign previously in a slightly different design. One of the comments was we had it centered on that, you know, entrance as you come in. The reality is is we probably want it off center to be in that line of sight. We've made that adjustment. Uh, and then we've also just changed the design of it to be more in line with the signs. And we do have the thank you message on the back. There's no exiting traffic at all here. Uh, this would really just be for pedestrian benefit as you walk along the sidewalk in and out of the office building, as maybe you're returning to your vehicle to exit. But there is a message on the rear of this sign. And then the D three, which we've altered uh, to relate to the potential new Turkey Road connection that may come at a future date. As to again, speak to that entering traffic as you come in, directing people to take a left or right. That same thing, messages there. Uh, there's no exiting traffic, but you know, as a just a bit of placemaking for pedestrians, maybe going to their car that are that exited.
Mr. Leaming, um, can you speak to how you decide which store names to include on these signs that have only eight store names or even those that have more?
Sure, yeah, sure. Um, you know, I think we we'd love to highlight everyone. Uh, we we realized that real estate is limited and size of sign is limited and balancing legibility and visibility while still not feeling too large or overpowering. Uh, right now, as we proposed it, uh, there is a bit of a hierarchy in square footage. You know, uh, Baccapries is the largest retailer at the shopping center there. Kind of in our industry, they'd be considered an anchor. Uh, and then you have folks like Walgreens, Ace Hardware, uh, the Pediatrics, the Ballet, uh, they're also very much larger partners of ours. And so that's really what drove us um, to sort of start the largest and work downward and get to a point where uh, if you were of a certain square footage or larger, you had some presence available to you on the side. That that's how we approached it, just as this first pass. Obviously, we we could still rethink that, but that's how we approached it.
Okay, thanks.
Ryan, do you have anything else right now?
Um, no, 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 thank you.
Okay, any um, additional questions for Mr. Lehman? At this time?
Well, I I just want to make sure, I think that maybe the engineer is gonna talk about the size of the letters and legibility, so.
Yeah, that's actually our next, our next witness, David, right? Uh, so I now call Larry uh, Gliozzi.
Yes.
So Mr. Gliozzi, you've been sworn, uh, can you just briefly uh, describe your uh, your professional background, please?
Sure. My name's Larry Gliozzi. I've been an owner of Lou Mark Signs for thirty years. Uh, we're in Hillsboro, New Jersey. Uh, previously I owned and operated Wayne Advertising Agency. And during my time running the agency, I realized that there's a need for sign companies that understand marketing and communication. Which you would expect to be the norm, but it certainly isn't. Um, so as a result, I started Lou Mark Signs and we've grown into a high end, full service expert sign company. We design, fabricate and install signage for uh, commercial customers. And we cater to large corporations that need improved branding throughout most of New Jersey. We've done repeated projects for Amazon, Eli Lilly, Johnson and Johnson, and of course Eden's Property Management. We recently designed signage for Honeywell via C B R E in Hamilton Township. And most recently, we have designed and manufactured identification signage for the Princeton Battlefield Park, which highlights some of the battles during the American Revolution. I would like to address the letter size and visibility of the shopping center proposed signage.
So uh, before you uh, do that, uh, Mr. Gliozzi, I just want to offer you as an expert in sign design and fabrication.
We accept those qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. So uh, as as you started to mention, um, a question from the board is the proposed letter heights and the visibility of those letters uh, from certain distances when someone is uh, traveling. So let's first start with the ID sign. Can you uh, comment on the letter sizes and the visibility of those uh, of those letters, please?
Sure. Um, there are many variables variables uh, for visibility, letter height, contrast, typefaces. Um, so this is a basic conversation about visibility and distance. Um, the proposed site ID sign, tenant letters are four inches high and the letter height for Princeton Shopping Center, the name is seven inches high. For four inch letters, this allows up to a hundred and fifty feet of visibility. And that comes from chart that is on many of the documents. Right there. And and one inch of letter height approximately equals about ten inch or rather ten to thirty-five feet of visibility. So each inch, uh, gives you a wide range of visibility. For the proposed sign, um, we have four inch high tenant letters. Uh, the shop Princeton Shopping Center name is seven inches. For four inches, this allows up to a hundred and fifty feet of visibility and the speed limit on North Harrison Street near the sign is thirty miles per hour. Which translates to forty-four feet per second. This allows a driver about three and a half seconds to recognize tenant names and slow down. Uh, any smaller letters at that speed may have a negative impact on traffic. Obviously also drivers will see the Princeton Shopping Center name at seven inches high much earlier and that will enable drivers, uh, time to slow down sooner. For the three internal directional signs, the letter height for the merchants is three inches and at this height, assuming a speed of fifteen miles per hour, a driver can recognize names at approximately a hundred feet, which allows the driver time to make a decision as whether to turn, you know, which direction.
So I, I, I think there is a, uh, exhibit that we were gonna show with related to those distances to the directory signs. Can we, uh, pull that up, please?
Yep, am I still driving here?
Yes, so, um, was this in our original, uh, plan set or is this a new exhibit?
This is, this is, yeah, we, we had these, uh, if I remember correctly, we had these plans included, but we did not highlight the areas um, as it related to site and zones. So this is C O two, our site plan, C dash O two in our site plan.
Okay, so Mr. Gliozzi, can you, um, talk about this, this exhibit and the, uh, the areas that you were mentioning as to when a driver can begin to see the, uh, the letters on the sign?
Well, I mean, it depends, of course, where, what section you're looking at, but again, the, uh, size of the signs have in part been reverse engineered to, to get the size that we needed. So we started out with a minimum size and also trying to stay within regulations as close as possible. But, um.
So you mentioned a hundred feet is when a driver turning into the shopping center, uh, approaching the, the directory sign and let's look at D one, for example. I think you said a hundred feet um, is when they begin to to see the letters. Is that your testimony?
That's correct, yes.
All right, and that's represented in the red shaded area on this plan?
We didn't produce this plan.
The, um, I can happy to help a little bit if that's, it's applicable, but the, if I'm zooming in here for everyone's benefit.
Yeah, maybe that, maybe that'll help, uh.
Yeah, this is, this is the hundred foot zone all the way out from the sign, the total area.
And Ryan, can you point out where the signs are?
Yep, yep. So this is, yep, D one here, I'll zoom in even more. The D one is here. And this is a hundred feet back, which as you can see, I, you know, kind of encompasses most of that drive-in.
And what does the green represent?
Larry helped me a little bit, but I believe the green represents when you have maximum visibility.
Fire clear, right, yes.
Absolutely maximum.
I think, I think the thing says optimal, not.
Optimal, optimal, perfect.
So that's that thirty foot zone you, uh, you were talking about, correct?
Correct, yeah, I believe so. Here I can check. Max, oh, max, readable distance for maximum impact.
Okay, my mistake. I thought it said.
Yeah, but it's, uh, the way I think of this, I'm not testifying, I'm just making observations. There's this zone and then out to the hundred foot. So this becomes your sort of, I guess your zone when you're, you're really starting to see that sign in your travel.
So, um, Mr. Gliozzi, is it your testimony that, given these distances and the, um, the speed of the cars that we're making an assumption now, obviously, uh, people travel at different speeds, but we're assuming, you know, a fifteen mile an hour speed once you're inside the, uh, center. Is your testimony that these distances are sufficient for a, uh, driver to see the letters on the sign and, and make a decision as to which maneuver to make?
Yes, if they're traveling approximately the speed limit, uh, these signs will get their attention in time for them to be able to make an informed decision. Uh, obvious if we could make the letters bigger, that would be even better, but, um, you know, we're working with the available space that, that we have. And you know, if you look, if you look at the ID number one sign, the large sign, there's, there's a lot of space in between the names. So an argument could be made that you could make those names larger. However, that will make the sign more difficult to read, not better. We need to have what's called white space, background space so that we can see McCaffrey's as an individual from Walgreens rather than it all running together.
Um, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a request that a legend be added to the plans indicating what the gr- green and red, red hatching is. Cause I spent a little time trying to figure that out in preparation for the meeting and it's clear from conversation tonight that not even all of the applicants professionals knew what the hatching was indicating, so. It would be good to have.
Yeah, thank you, David. I spent some time on it too and never did figure it out. Um, Mr. Lesko?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make a similar request. Can, can we have the professionals that prepared the plans? You know, testify to them first before, uh, you, you know, we, we kind of introduce them without any acknowledgement of what they are. Cause I think what I just heard was, um, you know, at, at least for Mr. Leeming, this is not testimony, but you know, we are in the testimony phase. Uh, so I know the engineer is here and it might be helpful to have, uh, he or she testify to, to what's going on.
Uh, that's fine, uh, Justin, yes. Uh, we have, uh, Tong To Lam, a professional engineer from Bowler, um, he can talk to these plans.
Uh, thanks for that, Justin. I, I did not understand that we, okay. Mr. Lam, uh, I, were you sworn in before?
No, I don't think, uh, we had him sworn in.
I don't think so either. So let's do that now.
Sir?
Muller?
If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give up the truth?
Yes, sir.
So sworn, um, please say your full name and spell your last name.
First name is Tong To, T U N G T O, last name Lam, L A M. F four, B O H L E R, we're the site civil engineer for Princeton Shopping Center on behalf of Eden's.
Uh, Mr. Lam, can you, um, say a little bit about your education and, um, what you and, and other things that speak to your qualifications so we can accept you?
Yes, two thousand and four graduate from Rochester City of Technology and Civil and Environmental, um, Engineering, um, PhD candidate at Rutgers for Civil Environmental Engineering, um, licensed professional in the state of New Jersey and the surrounding states, including Pennsylvania and New York, Connecticut, um, and Virginia.
And you have previously testified either before this board or similar boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have, um, full experience before Mercer County, but not within Princeton itself.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Lam, there's been a question about, um, uh, some plans that we're, we've been referring to. I believe you're a firm, uh, prepare these plans, so perhaps you can, uh, just talk about them and what they represent.
Correct, we prepare a five-page set, um. Ryan, do you want me to share a screen or do you want to continue?
Go ahead. Take over.
Let me know if you see my screen.
We can see it now. Thank you.
This is a five-page set. It was, um, submitted from Bowler Engineering. Sheet C dash O one, this is the overall site layout plan. Previously, our office was the site civil engineer for the Walgreens application and also for the Avalon. This is the background of those documents. Superimposed on top of it, we've added the shopping center sign, the transformer location, and then the free directory signs for wayfinding purpose that is on sheet one. The second sheet is, um, a zoom in version. In set one, in set two are for directional, um, sign one and directional sign two. In set three, directional sign number three. The difference between one and two and three, um, one and two, you have the green and the red. If you add the green plus the red, you get the one hundred foot distance and that is later on referred to on signage detail. But number from the green is basically the thirty foot readability zone and a hundred foot is the uh, distance recommended based on letter heights. So you'll see that on site inset, you know, D one and D two. As Ryan previously indicated, the row has not been constructed yet for directory sign D three, which is why you do not see that zone, red and green. And similarly, if you move it down to the ID sign, you'll see a cone vision, which is from Ash Hill, which is what you see in red. And then moving on, on number three, which is the transformer location, on the left side is existing condition and so what needs to be demolished. And the right side is proposed condition, what needs to be constructed. As Ryan previously indicated, we could not locate the transformer in the same location as the previous transformer because A is larger and B, we have to construct a new transformer before we decommission their existing transformer. So scrolling through number four, that's the detail sheets. The top is about the transformer information from the utility company. The detail number two is the ball replacement as recommended. By the utility company, number three is their follow details. Four, five, six, these are, and seven, these are just some associated site improvements such as curbing, pavement, ADA stripings, and then just standard parking lot striping. Moving on to, okay, sorry about that. Site, um. Just give me a second.
Actually, while you're on this one, I want, I had a question about that with the, the image, um, on the right in set four um, does not show any green. Only, only red, uh, you know, for those traveling along, um, Harrison northbound and, um, so I'm, uh, just concerned about readability for people going thirty miles an hour or close to it and how close they need to get to that sign before, I don't know, it, that, that, that little streak of red does not look great to me, just saying.
The streak of red is their Ash Hill, um, site triangle for a public road thirty miles per hours. We have shown the triangle for thirty-five miles an hour because the posted speed limit is thirty. You have five for your design, so we're showing the site triangle at the driveway and that site triangle is representing if someone's at that driveway looking to exit the site, the signage itself and the proposed improvements will not impede.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with seeing the sign. That's purely site triangle for people, uh, exiting at that point, right? Okay, all right.
They have enough distance to A, recognize where you are and have time to stop. And we designed it to enter um, beyond stopping. So it's, you know, stopping is the minimum and we went beyond that. So as a safety matter.
Yeah. So you did not prepare any kind of similar graphic with the, uh, red and green, uh, cross hatching for visibility of the proposed monument sign there?
That's correct.
Okay.
It goes on sheet number four. Sorry, I'll share my screen again. And then sheet number four is just their ID sign details. And their four, three direction, um, strength signs. Oh. Is this my screen or? Sorry, um, can you see my screen or no?
We can see a screen. Don't know if it's yours.
Not sure, right?
It's, it's showing, uh, sheet five, C O five.
Sheet five is, um, simply the side detail that Ryan was previously presenting, top, upper, left-hand corner. That is their shopping center sign and the bounce free signs are the directory sign, their wayfinding signage. And that concludes my five-sheet document that our office put together for this project.
Um, any, any questions for Mr. Lam? Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mr. Lesko?
Yes, Madam Chair, I actually had a question for the, uh, uh, previous, uh, expert that was testifying. And I apologize for.
Mr. Gliozzi?
Yes, yep. Uh, I, I believe you said, uh, someone could see that, that main, the, the identification sign, uh, three point five seconds in advance. Uh, so what does that mean? Uh, you know, does that mean they can see, I mean, not all six, they can't read all sixteen signs in advance. What, what does that mean? You glance over and you see something or, or, you know, you're looking for a sign that says, I don't know, Starbucks and, and you could see that within that timeframe or, or kind of what exactly does that three point five seconds entail from when a driver going thirty can see, uh, the signage?
Yes, so, um, you know, not everything happens in that three and a half seconds. Prior to seeing the sign, uh, you're looking for the sign. It depends on your, what awareness you have. You may just be not even looking for any sign. The three and a half seconds is the amount of time it takes to travel that distance uh, from when you first see it until you're aligned with it. And of course, if you are looking for a sign, typically. Typically, uh, once you see it, you're going to start to slow down in anticipation of where the store is. So. There's, there's a lot more to it. Than just this distance is what we can see and. Does, does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, that was helpful. I'm not sure if I understand, but um. That was helpful.
Well, I I guess I'll ask a fuck, well, no, Mayor Frida, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I I I think. You know, the reality of what happens, the way the road is today, it's two lanes. And people that are gonna make that right-hand turn into that entrance. Are not doing the thirty, thirty-five miles an hour, they're slowing down. So they are gonna be able to read the sign a little bit better. And I guess somebody that's going down Harrison Street that's never been in Princeton and never seen the Princeton Shopping Center before. Might go by too fast to read the individual names, but they're gonna know that it says Princeton Shopping Center, so. I think they would have figured it out when they saw all the shops as they drove by, but if not. Then at least the Princeton Shopping Center part is obvious to them. And then I imagine at some point, if what we think might happen to. To the roadway and it becomes a single lane. It'll be very. Well, almost impossible, I think, unless it's late at night for people to be doing thirty-five miles an hour down Harrison Street. So I I. I don't know that I'd get all hung up about. How long it's gonna take somebody to read every store name on this sign? I kind of get the idea as to why they want the sign. I don't know that it's as effective as they hope it's gonna be, but. I. Anyway, I I just think to move the conversation along, unless there's some real specific, what is wrong with this sign type questions? I'm I I'm I'm not sure that we're gonna achieve much more on this side. I think it's. You know, maybe it's not perfect, maybe it's not the best, but I don't I I don't see where it's a problem.
Uh, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I don't know if um we're starting to get into deliberation a little bit here and whether there's some more testimony to hear first, but. My bigger question is the location of the sign rather than the size of the letters. Um, I think that the location where it's proposed is gonna drive a lot of new traffic. Into that entrance by. Um, by the pizza place, by by Nomad. Um, I'm not sure if we want a lot of new. Traffic. Coming in in that particular entry, and I also is thinking about this fact that there doesn't seem to be a good location. For a directional sign. At the end of that driveway, so that if people do enter there, then they come to the. The ring road and they don't know which way to go to get to the store that they want to get to. So I would like to have the applicant talk a little bit about. Why it wouldn't make more sense. To have the ID sign. Be incorporated into the existing. Uh, shopping center sign that's at the Valley Road entrance. That could sit on top of there. Encourage people to enter in the right place. And where they would also have access to a directional sign. Once they've made the turn into the property. Uh, so I'd like to hear some discussion about that.
Yeah, thank you. I um. Part one of your comment was was exactly a a concern of mine as well, um. Especially since if McCaffrey's is identified as the first, you'll have a lot of people turning in there. More than than do that turn now and then taking a left turn. Uh, which is not an easy thing to do there uh under the best circumstances, so. Um, thank you for, thank you for all of that, David. Um. So uh, so David posed a question for the applicant to speak to. Uh, Mr. Leeming, are you the right person to? Field that question or do you?
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about it a little bit. Anybody anybody else on our team can also can happy to speak. And I think they won't let me stop sharing, so am I still up here? Can you still see this? Yeah, I don't know why it won't let me stop sharing. I apologize. I might have to leave and come back after after this.
Maybe it's maybe it's the engineer's file that's being shared right now. He wasn't sure. So then we ask him to stop sharing. See if that solves it.
Sharing, right?
I think you, I think you still have me. Yeah, I don't know why I won't let me stop. Anyway, um. This is that entrance at Valley Road here in 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 set two. Um, you know, the V two sign. And. One reason, we did look at this, we did sort of study this a lot, we kicked this around and and here was our thought process, whether right or wrong. The existing sign at Valley Road sits kitty-corner today. And it really. Thinks about people entering in this way. Entering from the left. It really speaks to people that are coming. To this side of Princeton Shopping Center. And this is their first exposure. Uh, you know, the PNC Bank is a little bit further down. But you're not really like. To the shopping center. Or into it, into the frontage of it until you get to this point. And so this sign, I I believe the reason they designed it this way is to speak to that traffic, to speak to that person taking a left, to speak to that person coming this way. And the intent of. Our sign. Our our ID one sign. We testified to this in the last hearing. Even though it may be intuitive or people may think or see it and want to take the turn there. Our intent is to not reinforce or or want to force people or want people to think that. That sign is meant to. Make you make a turn there. It's simply just meant to. Be a bit of an amenity and speak to the both direction of traffic on North Harrison. That could view that sign from either direction. Whereas if we did, let's say, we we'd be happy to look at it, but let's say we did. Um. Replace this sign with the same sign in the same orientation, not saying that's the right thing to do, but if we did do that. This sign would not be visible to anybody coming in the direction. Uh, on North Harrison away from downtown. And so then we could turn it, we could say, okay, what if we moved in the same orientation? You brought it down, it now speaks to people going this way, people coming on Valley Road cannot see it. So that was some of the thinking is to say, well, let's keep that sign the way it is. As an identification sign announcing the Princeton Shopping Center. Let's try to use this sign in the in the middle of our frontage, roughly the middle of our frontage along North Harrison. As just a way to provide more awareness of the shopping center. Some of our retail partners. That's really the the intent of that sign. So. That was the thinking.
Ryan, have you done any, anybody on your team done any traffic studies in terms of the uh? Where the 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 origin of people going to the shopping shopping center, not people just passing by. Um, I'd be particularly curious about how many people would use Valley Road. Um. As the way of. As a as a starting point. But I don't know if you have any traffic data on on this.
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, um Jerry. Um, anecdotally, and I would. I don't know if anyone on staff has anything, but I think it's primarily. Valley Road. With the bulk of the cars sort of. Equal split with most, I think most now, previously when we're doing construction. You know, Valley Road and the entrance to Nomad were very heavily trafficked. Because that that entrance was closed or um at certain times it was closed, right? When we were doing the site construction for Walgreens, we then opened it up. But then the Avalon Ring Road was closed, so I think people still weren't really comfortable coming in there. Uh, but now that that's back open again, we. We're probably not quite there yet, but we hope that that entrance starts to become. Um, a good entrance for folks coming out of downtown. The Valley Road entrance is prominent in this. Call it Nomad Pizza entry is actually almost. Third as far as traffic. I think people coming out of downtown, once there's more comfort with. Kind of, you know, if you remember how folks used to e- experience a shopping center, they'd really come in that right turn and almost. Fly all the way down and park, you know, by Rita's where there was always a lot of parking. Uh, I think once folks get more comfortable driving around Avalon and getting back there, I think you'll start to see that entrance become a lot more prominent.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. That was it was, thank you for bringing that up because that was also another consideration is that this entrance. If you're coming from either direction, this entrance is actually. The last entrance you would come upon.
Yeah.
You know, you would get identity of the shopping center first. And potentially use that. Again, this is just meant to, as traffic is is passing by, you know, oh. Like, you know, Ace Hardware, oh, you know, so and so, that's right, Prince Shopping Center.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm sure you're on mute, but I think. I.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I'm gonna just unmute myself permanently. Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, thank you. Um, we've heard a lot of testimony about uh this uh shopping center identification sign. For uh people traveling north on North Harrison Street. Um, it is a two-sided sign. Uh. Do you have any testimony for the need for? The other side and and how cars might see that uh coming south on North Harrison Street?
Um. You want me to talk about that? Happy to.
Yeah, whoever.
Not our sign expert, they're ha- I'm happy to have Larry and Team Way in as well. Um. You know, obviously, I think everything Larry spoke about, the 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 distances and such. Um, coming the other direction, you're a little bit further away. All right, and so that will be impacted a little bit. Um. But again, I think part of the reason we, you know, the Louise, you mentioned the kind of the red and the green of this sign. Or the reason we didn't show that is because again, that's. That wasn't necessarily the intent of the sign. We know people will see it, we know people will look at it, they might be able to. You know, they'll say, oh, you know, McCaffrey's or 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 somebody else. But it's it's just really meant to provide some presence, provide some curb appeal. Uh. I've been not in. I guess short answer is we didn't, you know, we didn't put any distances on this plan to say. A car on the other side of the road is this far away, therefore this is when they're gonna be able to read the sign. Right? We did not study that. Uh. Because, you know, it was like. They may see it, they may read it, they may understand it, they'll see Prince Shopping Center, it's just another reminder that we're we're here in the community. Uh, but I guess not meant to. Force anybody to make a traffic move or or do anything drastic. And I would also add to one thing we didn't speak about too is that um. Both sides of that sign obviously speaks to pedestrian traffic as well along North Harrison and. And they brought up the road diet, but also potential bike traffic, uh maybe in the future as well.
Got it, thank you. Uh, and I just had a question for your engineer, uh if he's still here. Um, would you be able to show us in that picture in the lower right, uh where the trees will be relocated to?
I can, yeah, we can go there, hold on. Um. So I don't know if you technically tell me you want to take this, I can move my mouse for you if you want to speak to it, but.
Yeah. If you just highlight. The landscaping would be good.
Yeah, we'll do this.
We're referring to basically sheet C three. Uh, sorry, not C three, um, what number is this?
C zero three.
Zero three, yes.
Right.
So on the left side, you can see the two existing trees. Basically on both sides of their um underground utilities. Because of their location of their ID sign transformer. Relocating. One of the trees to the right. Of the double dash line, which is identifying as a easement. And then the opposite tree on the left side of their underground utility of the gas line. Further back in the main island between the two rows of parking or the head-in parking there. So what you see on the left is the existing location in yellow. And then on the right side showing as proposed condition, you'll see same two trees, but relocated.
Thank you, thank you. And I I'll just cut to the chase here. Um, there used to be trees there as part of the approval, uh I believe for Nomad. Uh, about ten or twelve years ago, uh they seem to have uh gone away since, you know, just judging from Google Earth photos since twenty eighteen. So really, this is not, you know, it might be a a evening out from what is on the ground now. But in a way, this is kind of a net loss of of two trees from what was previously. Proposed and, you know, part of the reason I bring that up is just because. Uh, with that approval, uh there's a clear ally of trees along North Harrison Street. Um, and essentially what would be done here would be, you know, cl- uh kind of clipping that allay. By at least two trees to put this sign, so I just want the board to be aware of that.
Right.
Ryan, do you have any concern about um this road in from uh past Nomads? That immediately adjacent to it are parking spaces that will be backing out into it to to just. Is that a concern that you have at all and have you? Have you studied that at all?
Um, those uh those spaces have been there for. I don't know how long, but a very long time. Uh, we did not specifically look at.
Yeah.
Anything specific to that um as it relates to this this sign.
But with this sign, you're gonna be pulling. Significantly more traffic into that. Minor driveway than than uses it now. I mean, do you acknowledge that or do you? Think that's not accurate?
Um, I don't, I don't know how to, I don't know how to measure that, like I don't know how to measure that future effect. Uh, I do, I do agree in that if you did not turn on the first. If you're coming away from downtown and you did not take that first right-hand turn for some reason. You know, you wanted to go to McCaffrey's, let's say. And for some reason, if you were. A new customer. And you perhaps saw McCaffrey's name. Maybe then, yes, if you did not know the shopping center, you would turn into that entrance. Whereas if you were a repeat customer, you would know to keep going and turn into the next entrance because it's closer. Um, and so I. I would agree that there's probably a a subset of of folks. Uh, maybe new folks that. Uh, are just not familiar with the shopping center, that this sign may. You know, they may say, oh, it it might force them to pull in, whereas most would. Either take that first entrance if convenient for them or go all the way down the Valley Road. Uh. I think the, whether it's fortunate or unfortunate. This area. And part of the reason we wanted to introduce the site signs. Um. Despite all our best efforts, it feels like everyone really loves to park front and center. Uh. And it's just, I think, retail nature, retail habit, right? You know, park kind of front and center. Um. And so I think this entrance is, for those that want to park front and center is is their main entrance. Um, when I first started working on this project, I don't know why. I always went in that entrance. Now I never go in it. Because I know pulling into an active parking lot and it is. It it, you know, it's if I want to get sort of in and park and and get around the center, uh I tend to go to Valley Road. Uh, and I tend to take a left. And I go all the way around and I I park over near Blue Bears, come in the backside of the Grover Park side of the courtyard. So I I do agree there'll be a subset of traffic, probably for some. New unfamiliar folks that. Um, yeah, may pull in this entrance. As a result of this sign.
Okay, thank you. Um. Uh, okay, I. If if. What I'm wondering, and maybe this is an unanswerable question, is that if if you were permitted a monument sign there to just identify in the middle of the shopping center? That what people are passing is Prince Princeton Shopping Center and did not. Um, have all of the um store names atop. Um, would you be able to put it between existing trees? Um, do you think you would still need to relocate? Trees? Um. And have you studied this well enough to know that? The tree that would be relocated to the island is. Uh, that the island is um is a. Receptive, if you will, is feasible location for that tree.
Yeah, um, by our first study on it, yes, it is. These, for whatever reason, maybe Justin alluded to it. There were trees displaced at the point of Nomad for some reason, and so these. These two trees and actually this third tree here, for whatever reason, are much smaller than all of the trees along North Harrison. Uh. And so they it would fit here, yes. Um. To the question about the size of the sign. Given, given that we. Are keeping in. Line with the size of the signs that are on site today, the Avalon Princeton sign. The existing monument sign and keeping with the code, the height of a sign under six feet. Um. You know, if if it was a suggestion of the board to just have a a project ID. We would simply take the word Princeton Shopping Center and propose it up on the same panel and the same height of the sign. Because that is the same size of the Avalon sign today. So we're trying to create some consistency. That would probably be the first initial thought. We could certainly study it, but I think that would be the thought. It would probably roughly be the same size, which is what that Avalon Princeton sign today is.
And therefore, you would still want to relocate the trees?
I I think from a conflict, you know, just a just a simple conflict, yes. Or again, or new, if that was a request of the board, you know, we're happy to 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 discuss that.
Any questions from board members or staff for Mr. Leeming, Mr. Lamb, or Mr. Gliozzi? Okay. Who's next, Mr. Letizia?
I'm going to leave and come back and try to cancel out my sharing.
All right. I now call Mr. Glenn Fastman.
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Fastman, I believe you've been sworn. Can you briefly tell the board about your educational and professional background, please?
Certainly. I am a graduate of Cornell University, and I held a master in fine arts from Yale University, the Yale School of Drama. I am an architectural lighting designer. I've been practicing for 35 years. The last 25 years, I am the co-owner and principal of Bliss Fastman, Inc. We are an architectural lighting design firm based in New York City. We do architectural lighting, both interior and exterior for projects throughout the United States and throughout the throughout the world. In Princeton, we designed the Bristol Myers Squibb facility on Princeton Pike that opened about eight years ago. We just recently completed the Center for Theological Inquiry near Princeton University, and we've done the Center for Jewish Stud Jewish Life at Princeton University as well. So we've done a number of projects in Princeton. I have testified at other planning boards, not in New Jersey, but in South Carolina and other municipalities.
So Madam Chair, I offer Mr. Fastman as an expert in architectural lighting design.
You almost had me at Yale MFA, but thanks for all the additional information and we accept your qualifications.
Thank you. Yes, I started as a theater designer, but quickly moved into architectural lighting. So I am a lighting consultant to Edens. I've done over 20 projects for Edens around the country and worked with Ryan on some of the initial planning on this project as well. But he asked me to come in to specifically look at reviewing the lighting of the sign. So if you allow me, I'm going to share my exhibit.
Chair, I've sort of lost track of where we're at in terms of numbers. What do you have?
We're up to A six.
Okay, so I think this.
And I have a five-page exhibit. So is this A six through A 10?
No, this is just A six, I think.
Yeah, okay. The whole thing could be marked A six. Okay.
Okay. So.
But it would be good if you could identify which slide you're on as you go.
Okay, so on slide number one, which was the, it is using the, as a base, the C zero one plan from Bowler that we looked at earlier, that you can see at the bottom of the page, but we've added some images at the top, which includes the sign design that from Lou Mark that we've already reviewed and that night rendering that Ryan showed you earlier, one of their new exhibits today. So I've just combined that onto the same sheet. At the bottom, I am showing a photometric calculation that we did for the sign with light levels, and we're going to go to blowups of all of this on the next page. But let me step back a little and just describe what we have done. Using information that was provided to us by Lou Mark Signs, we were able to create a photometric model of this sign on this piece of property to actually look at light trespass at the property boundary. The sign itself is 16 feet wide, four feet high, and mounted 22 inches off the ground above that plinth with the Princeton Shopping Center name at the bottom. The sign cabinet itself is internally illuminated with LED strip lights fronts, and it's an ANPRO stick LED strip from a company called G2G Lighting. There will be 16 of these LED strips inside the sign, eight for each face of the sign. Each strip light provides 2,243 lumens, and a lumens is a quantity of light output from a light source. So we will get a total of 36,000 lumens of light for the entire sign. Both faces are 18,000 lumens per face of the sign. As was described by Ryan earlier, only the letters themselves are illuminated. The background itself is solid and will not illuminate at night. It is estimated that the letters occupy about 30% of the surface area of the sign. So only 30% of the total light output inside the sign would actually be emitted. So that reduces the 18,000 lumens down to 5,400 lumens per face. The acrylic itself is also only 25% transmissive at night, meaning only 25% of the total light inside transfers outside of the box. That would reduce the total lumens per face of sign to 1,350 lumens. So in order for us to run this in our photometric calculation program, we had to create a luminaire basically of the sign box. And what we did is we took the surface area of the sign, that 64 square feet, and reduced it down to 30% and made that a continuous luminous. I can't create each letter in the software, but we created a equal surface area of 30% to give that the total light output of the sign cabinet.
Mr. Fastman, you're now referring to another exhibit.
Sorry, I've moved on to page two.
So let's identify this.
This is a blowup. This is a blowup of the first page of the specific area where the sign is located with our photometric calculation and an axometric view of that sign cabinet.
All right. Tommy, for me, is this the second page, your second slide of A six?
Yes, this is the second. Yes, this is the second slide of A six.
We're marking all these A six.
Right, all five, yeah. And we're up to two of.
Okay, two of five of A five or A six.
Of A six, yeah.
All right, okay, go ahead.
So we then on both, on each side, we have the same luminous surface that provides the same amount of light, the 1,350 lumens across 30% of the surface of the sign on each side. That was then located in the plan. And then we did photometric calculations. The calculation points is a five-foot grid of calculation points measured at the ground level. These points are in foot candles, which is the standard unit of measure for light light illuminance on a surface. So this is the amount of light that's being received at the surface from another object that is illuminated. The cap, the signage runs perpendicular to the property line. This dark line here is the property line. I shown on the Bowler plan. And our sign is located here. So you can see there are points immediately in front of the sign on each side, 18.6-foot candles, 20.4-foot candles. That is the brightness just two and a half feet off of the sign in each direction at the center of the sign. At the property line, which is this line here, we are only getting points no higher than 0.3-foot candles. As I understand the the code, we need to be under 0.7-foot candles at the property boundary. There is no point in our calculation that exceeds that 0.7-foot candles.
And does the, does the ordinance also reflect or mean at ground level? I'm just wondering whether ground level is the same as as eye level in terms of the lumens or or not?
When doing site lighting calculations, ground level is the usual accepted measure. It's never at eye level. The other measure is usually at task level when we do interior lighting calculations, and that's usually at 30 inches off the ground. But when we do site lighting calculations, parking fields and things like that, we always use the ground level as the calculated surface. And your your staff members can can confirm if that is the way the the code is written. So as you can see, the the brightness, because the sign runs perpendicular to the property line, as you go further along the property line, we go lower and lower because we're also going further and further away from the sign. And immediately in front of the sign, because there is no light emitted on the short end of the sign, we're actually have a low point of no of zero foot candles. So that's why you see it goes zero to the point goes a little higher, slightly to the left and to the right of the sign, and then goes down again toward zero, but no point higher than 0.3 at the property line. This next exhibit, this is page three of A six. This is an axometric view of the sign, just showing the brightness of the sign. Each line here represents a drop of 10% in the light output of the sign. And we are below 0.1-foot candles, 45 feet out from the sign in either direction. But as you can see, the light is going forwards and back of the sign, not out towards the property line or to the street or neighboring properties. We've also go to page four of our exhibit. This is just a overhead view similar to the plan. Again, just showing you, you can see the numbers not overlaid on a plan, but just the same idea of seeing the brightness of the sign and how it drops off all within the property of the Princeton Shopping Center. Our last page, page five of our exhibit is a calculation of luminance, different than illuminance. Luminance is the light output of a surface. But your code speaks of not exceeding 50-foot Lambert's at the property boundary. This calculation is done as a color chart, not as a point chart as the foot candle calculation was done. And in blue, we are no higher than two. Now, our, the the unit of measure of our software is actually in candela's per square meter. We are no higher than two candela's per square meat, per square meter, and a one-foot Lambert is equal to 3.42 candela's per square meter. So in converting the candela's per square meter to foot Lambert's, which is the way the code is written, we do not exceed 0.58-foot Lambert's at the property line, well below the 50-foot Lambert allowance.
So, Mr. Fastman, it is your expert conclusion that the this proposed internal illuminated sign complies with the applicable codes related to illumination at the property line. Is that correct?
I do indeed.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Fastman?
Okay, seeing none, I propose a bio break. And before we hear, I guess, from your planning expert, is that what will happen next?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, see everybody back here at 9:43 or before. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Philip. Mr. Letizia?
Yes, I now call my last witness, Mr. John McDonough. I believe Mr. McDonough missed, or he did, no, he did not miss the group swearing in, so.
Right.
Right? Okay, so.
Yes, I was sworn.
You were. Please provide your educational and professional background for the board, please.
Sure thing. Hi there again, everyone. My name is John McDonough. I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. That license is current. It's in good standing. I am also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is our national certification, essentially allows us to testify in any state in the Union. I am also a licensed landscape architect here in the state of New Jersey, testifying this evening in the capacity of a professional planner, but I do rely on that landscape expertise as well in terms of rendering my my planning conclusions. I do this on a nightly basis throughout the state of New Jersey. I get to see the full cross-section. I do this in courts as well during the day. And I've been here in your great community many, many times in the past.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, Mr. McDonough, explain to the board what your role is with respect to this project and what what you did to reach certain conclusions as to whether or not the the variances being sought here for the signage as well as the setback for the transformer are reasonable under the the evidence presented, please?
Sure thing. Planner's role is always to sort of tie it all together, to look at all the facts that are before the board, the evidence, the testimony, render conclusions and opinions with respect to whether the statutory criteria for the grant of the relief that the applicant is seeking are met. And the criteria are well established in our land use law, which goes back to the 1970s now under the subsection C, under section 70 of the land use law. And we've taken that analysis.
And can you summarize for the board your conclusions?
Sure. So we first start with a look at existing conditions and compliments to the board and to the community for the for the positive transformation that we're seeing in this particular area. We know that we're dealing with an important center in the community. We're talking about an economic anchor here. That's been a longstanding part of the community. We know that land use does not stand still. It needs to evolve. Most importantly, retail, more than any other land use, needs to evolve to stay fresh in the public eye. In particular, bricks and mortar retail, which now has to compete with online sales. That said, this has, this area has seen a very positive transformation through good planning and through the efforts of this board in the community as well. A couple of months ago, we went through the upgrades to the sign package on the building, on the facade. And this is another step in that continuum of positive upgrades to help evolve the the center to the next phase of its existence. You heard about providing for an additional sign along the frontage. Again, for roadside recognition, to provide clear and safe identification of the site for the motoring public. And then you heard about these directional signs to demarcate and provide navigation aids, wayfinding elements on the site once one is on the property. Bearing in mind that this is a very large site in the context of your community, one of the larger sites, safe and efficient circulation is certainly key. And as you've heard, these elements become important in that regard. What's nice about signage, especially tastefully done signage, is that they also become architectural elements or design elements that help tie a site together. Much like in landscape architecture, where we use plantings to unify a site, we can use hardscape materials such as good signs to unify a site as well. As I said, it's a very large site. These signs become markers, if you will. They're not only wayfinding signs, but they do help establish markers on an otherwise large site and provide a unifying element that helps tie the site together. In landscape architecture, we like to use that phrase hit and go hit. Take clusters of plantings, move them from one part of the site to the other part of the site in a repetitive fashion, again, to help sort of knit the whole site together. And that's one of the benefits of what this sign package will do as well, provide an aesthetic aesthetic element much like a fence that would unify the site and a particularly large site together. That's especially important when the sign package is done proportionately and tastefully, which I think our applicant has put great care, thought and consideration into achieving that objective. You've heard a lot of testimony here with respect to potentially adverse impacts, the height of the letters, the the lighting impacts. Again, the mass and scale of the signs that are being proposed here, and that is really the essence of the application before the board, to balance those positives with clear and safe site identification, safe and efficient navigation through the site, aesthetic elements, a unifying element, certainly efficient use of land and the promotion of the free flow of traffic as the comprehensive benefits of this package as a whole. as the comprehensive benefits of, of this package as a whole. With respect to the counter side to that, the consideration of the negative criteria. I think this board, as it always has, goes through the, the proper and detailed vetting here of potential impacts. Again, with respect to lighting, with respect to the size of the letters and the overall look and appearance and striking that balance where those benefits, uh, would substantially outweigh any detriments. Uh, so clearly I believe that based on all the testimony, this sign package that's before the board requiring relief for a sign type that's not permitted in the zone, an extra roadside sign or extra ground sign. And that roadside sign is going to be of the same dimension, sixteen feet across by four feet high um, as the Avalon sign, which is another marker at another one of the entrance ways. We don't believe it's excessive. We don't believe it's intrusive. Again, based on the visuals and the testimony that has been placed before you. Uh, the directional signs again are also proportionate to the landscape that's around it. Uh, we think the applicant has provided for a minimalist approach here in terms of doing what's necessary to bring buildings and storefronts to the street. Uh, well, where we know they are long established set back from the street. So the way to bring those stores and those offerings to the public is by good signage, by, uh, informational signage that will announce to the public that those offerings are there. And again, help to draw people, uh, into awareness of, of the site and the uses that are there on. Um, in terms of the statutory criteria, we believe multiple purposes of zoning are advanced here, including purpose A. The promotion of the general welfare within enhancements to an established business, an established center with a longstanding commitment to the community that has certainly been an important part of your economic engine here. Um, it says over and over in your master plan about providing for a stable ratable base, economic development. This has provided that for a long time. And, um, as I said, this brings it into the next step in its evolution. We think what's being proposed here is a continuum of the facade signage that was approved a few months ago. Also, the advancement of purpose H, which is the free flow of traffic, and that goes all towards those visual cues. Uh, those directional aids, uh, that lessen confusion, um, on a large scale site. We think that's a benefit as well. Uh, purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. Um, again, these are aesthetic. We think they're tasteful and ref- reflect positively of your community without being excessive, without creating over branding or sign clutter. Again, planning is all about balance, and we think the applicant has struck that good balance here. So purpose A, purpose I, purpose H, and I think the board can also certainly find under purpose M, our planning goal for efficient use of land. This is the developed site. The applicant is working with the confines of what's already there. Um, this is a retrofit, and I think that also goes towards the planning purpose for efficient use of land. Counterbalancing that with respect to the negative criteria. The relief is laid out in your planners report. I can certainly go into detail into any one of them. If the board would like, but I would say in general, relief related to the sign type, that roadside, uh, sign that's being proposed. And the illumination of not only the roadside sign, but the other signs as well. Uh, the three directory signs which exceed the maximum allowance in terms of area slightly exceed the allowance in terms of the overall height. And then the illumination, which you've just heard, uh, good solid testimony on as well. Uh, the transformer, we've heard about testimony about that as well as an essential element or utility element that's cited by public service on the site. Even though it's closer to the road than it is allowed to be at twenty-nine feet, where fifty feet would be the minimum required. That's where it provides its utilitarian function on the site. Mitigated by the fact that the primary sign is going to be closer to the road and be the more, the more dominant feature, uh, to the eye. Uh, the mitigative measures of the fact that we're dealing with a boulevard road, lessening the impacts on the adjacent properties. Um, and therefore, I believe, under the flexible C balancing test, the C two balancing test. The benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh any negatives here. I think the board can also find that there is a meeting of the statutory criteria under C one, which would be a hardship related to the land and the structures lawfully existing thereon. This is an established center. This is an established site. These signs are being proposed again as a retrofit of that which is already there. Uh, whereby relief relates to the land and the structures that are lawfully existing thereon. The board could find that there's a, a basis for C one. I think the stronger aspect is C two under the balancing. But I give the board the C one to, uh, consider as well. It is not the applicant's burden to hit both C one and C two. It's either or, um, because this application does, in my view, advance both. Um, it is double strong, um, and therefore the statutory criteria for grant of the relief sought are met. Um, relief can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public. Uh, and certainly without any substantial impairment to your zone plan and ordinance. These are good controls that you have in your ordinance that go towards the quality of the community. Grant of the relief here on this very distinct, very special site, um, is not tantamount to a rezone. Um, is mitigated by the sheer size of the property. Um, and in that regard, I do not think the board would be exceeding its authority uh, that only the governing body can exercise in terms of zoning, uh, within the confines of your community. Um, all said, as, as I said, the statutory criteria for all of the relief the applicant is seeking are met based on all of the testimony before the board. Um, and with that, I would close by saying approval is warranted. Tom, that's all I have on direct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McDonough. Uh, Mr. McDonough is now available for, uh, questions, uh, from the board or staff.
Questions from other board members for Mr. McDonough? I, I just have one question again about that middle, um, monument sign. Uh, the new sign close to the smallest driveway. Do you see any, um, you know, planning related issues, especially related or as relates to public health and safety to having the sign, uh, with all of the, um, with, with all of the proposed, um, store names on it facing both directions, including the southbound uh, uh, Harrison Street lanes that are separated by a median. Um, and have no access at that point anyway. I feel, you know, I, uh, combined with the thirty mile an hour speed limit and the additional traffic being, um, directed into the shopping center at that point. And then many of those taking left turns with lots and lots of pedestrian activity right there related to not only popular stores, but very popular restaurant. Do you not have any reservations, uh, about the way that sign is proposed from a planning perspective?
It certainly is worth a deeper dive, Madam Chair. Um, the word Princeton Shopping Center certainly provides that uni- unifying element that I was talking about. What I like about the names of the stores on the front. First of all, they are, they are tasteful. They're not excessive. They all complement each other. Um, they're the minimalist necessary to provide that, that readability, that legibility. Um, and I also think it's the one way to bring the storefronts to the street, which is where you would want them. And it just happens that that's the way this center was built with the building set, set back. And I think this is a, a tasteful, creative way to, to bring those storefronts closer to the public, which is uh, where we, you would essentially want them to be. So it's about balance. And I think having those, uh, those names on that panel in the front there do provide a, a positive effect. And the impact in my view is, is minimal. You've got a very dominant Avalon name on the other side. So this lets the public know that there are other things there besides, uh, Avalon.
Thank you, um, Mr. Lesko.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'd just like to ask, uh, Mr. McDonough or Mr. Leeming, has the shopping center in its nearly seventy years of existence had any issue without bringing the stores to the street as Mr. McDonough testified for? You know, is that i- is that a valid, uh, I know it's, uh, you know, a beneficial thing for the shopping center. But has that been a concern over the past six decades?
I can, I can start, um. Obviously, even, you know, has only owned the shopping center for about ten years, a little bit more, um, uh. I would say that, you know, bringing the, bringing the, the storefronts to the street is a great analogy. I think as we finished our redevelopment and reinvigoration of the shopping center, we are still leasing the shopping center. And even though we have a lot more spaces coming, um, we are still working on, this is only one storefront, Justin. But we are still working on a large vacancy on the Grover Park side. And I think one thing, maybe not decades back, uh, because we know that the, the design of the shopping center was also very different. And I think, I think at one point, the storefronts were all on the inside facing the courtyard. And the, the all it, what faces the street now were actually the back doors of a lot of the stores. I think that was how the shopping center was originally created. Um, you know, we have heard from a lot of our retailers, Concord Pet, Ace Hardware. Um, some of those folks on the Grover Park side that, um, they wish there was a little bit more love or a little bit more presence or a little bit more visibility to, uh, to them. And so that is, uh, something we also are thinking about and trying to solve for with this sign and some of the wayfinding signs. So, uh, we would love to bring more of those Grover Park side uh, retailers to the street if we could.
Which I understand that, and I, I think that was basically the testimony about the facade signs. When you were asking for, you know, bringing the ones that didn't have the, the frontage towards North Harrison Street. But through your testimony before and through what you've shown in the documents, it appears this, you know, the, the sixteen spaces are going to the highest bidder. Or, you know, uh, we saw Starbucks and McCaffrey's because it was largest, you said. It doesn't necessarily appear that those are the, the Grover Park, uh, tenants.
Yeah, Starbucks is not on any sign. Um, so the way that we approached that Starbucks is one of the smallest retailers of the shopping center. Um, the way that, again, the way that we approached the hierarchy is actually not by the highest bidder, but by uh, the largest square footage. Uh, and so that was really just how we approached it to show a direction. You know, we're happy to, if, if, if there's a comment to rethink that, uh, we're happy to do that. Um, but folks like Metropolis, Concord Pet, Ace Hardware, uh, they are large. You know, we have space one thirty, space one forty, which are also on the Grover Park side. Um, that's five of the sixteen in those, just in those few, uh, that would have some additional presence on that North Harrison side, just from our approach of going by the square footage. So we could always rethink that approach. Um, and we may, and we, we certainly want that flexibility, but that's how we just approached it for tonight. Was, uh, based upon a square footage hierarchy to have some, some reason and some logic.
Got it. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Cohen, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, I didn't take it down. Maybe it was just waiting too long. Uh, so I, I want to give Ryan a little love. I really, really like the new sign designs that you brought tonight. I think they're much better uh, than they were the last time we saw them. Um, I think that, uh, you know, all the directional stuff is very clear, um, and reasonable. I think the lighting of the illuminated sign makes perfect sense based on the testimony of your lighting expert. The only reservations I have. Uh, one, the signage on the back of the directional signs. I, I really don't think on sign two and sign three that it's meaningful at all. Sign two, the back is up against bushes, actually. There're pedestrians are never going to see the back of that sign. Um, sign three, that's over by the rear entry. Again, no sidewalks that go anywhere near there, you know, a couple of drivers who park in that portion of the lot might see it. But it's just not meaningful in those two locations. And as others have mentioned, on D, on D one, it sends a message that might be misinterpreted that this in-only driveway is also available for going out. So I would suggest just eliminating the, the messaging on the back of the signs. Um, get rid of those three variances. I think the transformer is fine in its location. As I said before, I'd like to see some planting. I'd like to see planting between the bollards. That would help to conceal the bollards as well as the transformer. And then in terms of the ID one sign. I've already explained, you know, what my concerns are. I'd love to hear from other members of the board. Um, I think that it, it makes a lot of sense to get the identifying information for the retailers up on the street as Mr. McDonough suggested. So I really don't have a problem with the design of ID one. But I want to hear more people's opinions about the location. I'm concerned about driving more traffic into that, uh, driveway. Um, and that sort of fouling up the internal circulation of, uh, of the site as a whole. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I, as people can tell, I'm concerned about that too. And I also am concerned about the interruption of the streetscape. Uh, and to that point, um, Justin, do you have any kind of image that shows existing conditions there, former conditions?
Sure. Certainly, um, so, you know, uh, I apologize for not including this in the report as this is something we probably would have. But just with the timeframes that we had, uh, it was hard to do so. Um, Jerry, do you mind if I show a Google street view? And then show multiple years? Are, are we able to, to use that as an exhibit?
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah.
Great. So here is a Google street view of the shopping center. Do we need to give this an exhibit number, Jerry?
Yep, that'd be PB one.
PB one, um, and it, it's kind of hard to tell, but I'm, I'm intentionally zoomed out in this area. Um, this is just after the Amoco station, uh, was adaptively reused into, uh, Nomad Pizza. So that's why I believe, uh, these trees were planted as part of an approval for that. Um, and as you could see, uh, in the median, there's a tree back here. You know, you can see the poles holding up the young tree in twenty sixteen. And then one, two, three, four trees, and then there's one over here that is clearly dying. Uh, but then here's the, the remainder of the LA, uh, kind of canopy. Um, if you move up to twenty seventeen and, and roughly the same spot, you'll see that dying tree is gone, but the other one, two, three, four, and the median one are still there. Uh, twenty eighteen is basically the same situation. Uh, but then when we jump to twenty twenty-three, the tree in the median is no longer there. Um, and you can actually see a hole in the ground where, um, uh, you know, there were four here and then the dying one there. Um, so what the applicant has proposed to do is essentially, uh, move this one back here uh, and move this one to more or less where the, the third in tree was before, um, in order to put the sign here. Uh, now I'm not a tree expert by any means. Uh, I know there's a lot of reasons why trees don't take. Um, but my concern would be, well, first off, like I said earlier, basically this would be a net loss of two trees from the approval from, you know, ten or so years ago, right off the bat. Um, and it, just the dimensions of where the, the LA stopped would, you know, be pushed up to here instead of all the way to nearly the end of the island. But particularly concerned i- if, if these are moved and they don't take, like the other two didn't take. Well, then we're left with really the last man standing here and a sign over here. Um, and that clearly is not going to, you know, replicate this condition. So, um, does that answer your question, Madam Chair, or?
Yeah, and what I don't think that it's just the, the, um, you know, the angle that you're showing it at, but the tree all the way to the left, which would be relocated, looks to be by far the happiest where it is, although I could, I, that could be sort of an illusion. I can't really tell. It's, it looks to be a, a good bit taller, that's all. And, and have a, a bigger caliper, but, yeah. Yeah, so I'm interested in other people's thoughts about that as well. Any other testimony, Mr.?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, that completes our direct presentation.
Okay, before we open this for public comment, are there other questions from board members for any of the witnesses tonight?
Louise, I'd like to just jump in on the, what Justin pointed out about the trees. So I mean, if the trees were required in a prior approval, then the trees, the number of trees at some point should equal what was required before. So I'm not going to get hung up on they have to be exactly where they were before. I understand the transformer and the sign caused complications, but those two trees should be replaced somewhere on the property, I would say.
Yeah, thank you for that. Ms. Capazoli?
Yeah, I just have a comment about, I'm at the shopping center a lot, and I do see some people using that drive. But generally, if you, I think if you want to go to McCaffrey's, you don't use that because it's farther away. And more people, I think, are going around that loop in the back to get to where they want to go. And I'm kind of worried that if we have a transformer there and no sign, then it's not going to look great. You know, like, yeah, you can do some landscaping around the transformer, but you're still going to see the transformer. I think, I, I don't know, I feel like the sign is gonna actually buffer the transformer a bit. And that might look better. I agree about planting more trees, but yeah, I, I, I'm kind of concerned that if it's empty, it might not look so good.
And do you have an opinion about the the identification sign versus the store name signs?
Yeah, I mean, it's because of the uniformity of the other signs, I think we're, we're whatever we choose, we're going to have about the same size of sign, you know? Whether it, and, and having the opportunity to let people know about the stores on, on the Grover side, I think is, is actually a good thing, because a lot of people don't even go to that side of the shopping center.
Except they have to now because there's no parking anywhere else. That's actually the good news from the stores' point of view, I'm sure. Any other, oh, thank you for that. Any other questions from board members before we hear from the public? Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yeah, I would like to make sure that there is a provision that if and when the access ingress egress road from Turun is built, that we will have another discussion there about signage and exits. I am a bit concerned about congestion in the parking lot, as there are three entrances and two exits. And all the people at Avalon are coming in near Avalon, but exiting through the shopping center. So I am hopeful that part of our requirements in the future will be to address a sign when the Turun Road entry exists for that purpose. I also agree with Julie about having the names of the stores out is good for the merchants in the rear on the Grover Park side. And so I don't have an issue with the store names being on there. I think that's it for me.
Yeah, and once that road you're talking about is built, there will be four entrances and two exits.
That won't be a two-way there?
No, I don't think so. Is it? Mr. Weisman, isn't that a one-way?
And so we do also want to address, I believe, that first entrance coming up North Harrison at the Walgreens to avoid some of that circling Walgreens to get out there for especially residents at the Avalon.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, good. Thank you for that. All right, so don't see any other comments coming. I'll establish this as the beginning of the open public comment period. We have four attendees in the attendees room. If any of you would like to, now it's three. Any of you would like to speak? I see one hand go up. Carrie, would you bring over Will? And if either of the other attendees would like to would like to speak to the board, now is the time to raise your hand. Virtually. Okay, I don't see any. Hi, Will, welcome. Mr. Muller will swear you in, and then we'll ask for your first name and last name with the spelling of your last name.
Great.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm your testimony about to give the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please say your full name and spell your last name.
Will Price, P R I C E.
Okay.
Do you need to dress?
No.
No, okay. Yeah, I've been listening to the conversation. I didn't hear all of the testimony. I came in late, and I guess, you know, I not really anticipated to have a concern, but as I, as I listened to how this would be designed and the, and just more about, I mean, I know that, that, that section very well. I bike there almost every day, going back and forth to the shopping center. I think, you know, in reality, most people either know where they're going or they're using navigation, and if they don't, they probably shouldn't be trying to pick out one of sixteen names on a sign, especially if we're trying to encourage people to, you know, to, to use a bike when they shot. I mean, it's very, it's already getting more, more and more congestion over there. There's it's already confusing. It is already hazardous for cyclists, and I just can't imagine if someone doesn't know where they're going trying to read a sign and figuring out which driveway to go in when there's hopefully more and more cyclists going back and forth right along that road. And I, I use it every day, and it is, you know, it's pretty harrowing at times, and I think that those intersections there are getting more dangerous. And I just urge the board to be very careful about adding something that will create distractions for drivers. That's all I had to share.
Um, quick question, Mr. Price, and I don't usually ask questions of people who testify, but as a bicyclist, because we certainly do want to encourage pedestrian and bikes, and that's being, as I understand it, taken into account with the, with the work that's being thought about for Harrison. Would it be helpful to you as a bicyclist to see the names of stores, especially those that are on the backside of the, of the, on the Grover Park side of the shopping center, if you were looking to go in there?
It's hard to imagine biking over there with not knowing what I was going for. Right? I mean, you go over there, bike over there for a purpose, so.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I mean, if, I don't want to interrupt closing the public comment section, so.
No, so thank you, Mr. Price. That's, that's all.
And I need to get out of here, right?
We'll, we'll kick you out. You don't need to do anything. I mean, Carrie will, will send you back over to the attendees room, so no worries. Any other members of the public want to address the board? I'm not, there's two people now in the attendees room. Don't see any hands going up, so I will close the public comment portion of the meeting now and turn to you, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment really in response to Will's observation that this question of whether having the names of stores is useful because people tend to know where they're going, when it related to a phenomenon with digital search versus, you know, encyclopedias, something that at least people of my generation lament is the lack of opportunity to discover stuff that you don't already know. You know, to the fact that, to the extent that people use wayfinding, it's to go to figure out how to get to a place they already know about. And what's good about this kind of directory signage, because I'm sure Edens will keep it up with the changing roster of tenants, is that it'll be a way for members of the community possibly to learn about the existence of new establishments, you know? My wife and I only recently went to Pasta, Pastiamo. It's a fantastic little place. It's new. You know, we probably shouldn't have waited as long as we did to get there, but we didn't really know that it was there. So I'm just making a pitch that I think there is a value to having that kind of directory signage that lets even longtime community, community members know that something new has arrived at the shopping center.
Yeah, thank you. Since you mentioned Pastiamo, I have to shout out Mia Sponia. Fabulous. Mr. O'Donnell?
And I'm just going to put in my, my plug for Blue Bears, because there are so many people who have heard of Blue Bears, but you know, aren't, either aren't exactly sure where it is. Or they, they've heard of it, but don't, together with the shopping center.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, so having it on a sign out front might be a, a nice little boost for you know, a, a good restaurant in town.
It's a great point. Thanks, Owen. Okay, other comments, questions? Thoughts as we deliberate and thoughts about conditions we might want to impose, any, any? I want to actually, I am interested, of course, in any thoughts the board has, but I'd like to hear from Mr. Lesko and Mr. Weisman, because there were some, you know, quite some real red flags raised in their memo, whether or not the, the testimony we've heard tonight addresses the the points that you made, I mean, and, you know, including whether the proofs have been made sufficient to well, to address all of your concerns. I'm sorry, I'm sort of losing my ability to speak at this point. Justin, you want to go first?
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to do so. I'll hold off on the testimony necessarily about the illumination, because I think Dan, as an engineer, has a better grasp on that, so just, you know, I'm not considering that, so let's not consider that right now. But I, I think most of the proofs that Mr. McDonough said, you know, make complete sense. I'm still just a little on the fence about the, the identification sign and really do the positive, you know, are there the positive reasons for the community, not just for the applicant? That outweigh, you know, the negative reasons, because I, I think there is some information that we're not, you know, fully sure about, you know, there, there's been some kind of paradoxes about, well, this is going to slow drivers down, which doesn't seem like something we want, or this might bring drivers to an entrance that we don't want. And I, I'm just kind of finding it hard without kind of knowing any, any finality about that, and then just weighing it against, you know, like I said earlier, shopping center's been here for six decades. And, and things have generally worked, so that's generally what I would say about that. And again, that's considering, if we're considering the C two criteria, the more flexible variance, going back to the C one variance, which, you know, is about the specifics of the lot, which can take buildings into account, particularly buildings, you know, that are, that are sixty, seventy years old. Again, I don't know how that really relates to this sign specifically. And if it does, how this is the absolute least, you know, impact that is needed to direct people to the shopping center, because one could certainly argue, and, and I kind of have, or at least I've heard it too, that if it's about getting people to the shopping center, you know, it certainly does not need to be this large. If the board finds that, about getting, getting people to specific tenants, you know, that's kind of a different story. But again, that is really, you know, based on the uniqueness of the properties, not necessarily that the Walgreens pad site has the largest square footage, and you just passed it and you pass the three signs it has, and you're going to catch it on the fourth, you know. So other than that, I would say it seems that the, the proofs offered about the directory signs, you know, that makes sense to, so you know, all right, I got to make a left here, or maybe I should make a right, and how that'll more evenly spread out traffic. And then obviously the bollard, you know, it seems like it can't really, or not the bollard, excuse me, the transformer with the bollards around it, seems like that's what's needed from P S E and G. That's what's needed for the shopping center. There aren't very, very many other locations or where there aren't any, so if there was any opportunity to screen it, you know, the board might want a condition based on that. And outside of that, I think that's, oh, and the, the rear signs or, or I should say the signs on the back. I I, I think there, you know, the, the testimony that Mr. Leaming offered about why those are something that, that shopping center would want, kind of makes sense. One thing that I was thinking too is, you know, a, a blank space ends up getting taken up by something. So maybe someone with a can of spray paint or, or some stickers might end up putting something else on there, if it's just blank and, and we probably don't want that. But of course, if there is any, I, I think the suggestion about putting the arrow that's an exit for the one, you know, that makes sense. And the board may want to consider, you know, do they need the shopping center logo, the Eden's logo and the message, or is that kind of overkill as well?
Yeah, I mean, the back sides of the signs might be an oppor- another opportunity to partner with the Arts Council. Smaller space, but still, you know, could use a creative touch maybe, and I, I, I'm not super comfortable with the Eden's there, because I don't think anybody knows that Eden's owns and runs the shopping center or necessarily cares, and I, you know, not going to die in a ditch over that try to micromanage, but I do think that it doesn't make sense to have signs where people, where they're either mislead people, as in the case of that one up by Walgreens, or simply won't be seen because they're behind bushes or whatever.
And, and Madam Chair, to your suggestion about the Arts Council, we have held that there's a difference between signage and artwork, you know, in things like the mural, as long as there's no logos on it. So, you know, I, I don't want to speak for our zoning officer, but I do think if there were different logo, or if there were no logos, that would be, you know, kind of a different situation as artwork than how it is now with, with logos and becoming signage.
Blank canvas, as it were.
So, meaning we would not have to come back for this board for another three-hour hearing?
No.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure of that.
Okay, other comments? Okay, other comments? Suggestion, oh, Mr. Taylor. Hi, Jack.
Yeah, hi. Let me make just a, a, a general comment. I feel. Unconstructive in, in making the comment. But of all the planning board sessions that I've been a part of. This has been, like always, a very conscientious, thorough, detailed discussion. And yet it's about a subject that most of us seem to be some, some degree uncomfortable about. Signage. I like David Cohen, I like your general summary as a conclusion. But at every juncture, when I reach a conclusion. And I step back and I honestly look in the mirror, I, I'm somewhat uncomfortable. And so when I look at a proposal like this. I think to the extent there are some remaining important questions. That we're just not comfortable about. That we focus on those issues as conditionalities in the final approval. So that we watch what actually happens. And based thereon, actions can be taken. So that's all I want to share. It's not a constructive contribution at one level. But whatever we put together. I'm simply recognizing that we don't seem collectively. To be as comfortable as we should be with the depth and extent of this discussion and the importance of it.
Well, signage is a tough thing. Signage is tricky. Um, you know, it uh. Sort of subjective. Um, um. I mean, I'm very glad to have gotten the, all the testimony we did tonight on, you know, the. Distances that are. You know, maximally readable versus barely readable, and how far the lumens go and everything, that's been. Super helpful, um. And I don't feel like it's necessary to come down exactly where everybody is um, on. Um, you know, every. Every detail, uh. But I, I, I. I hear what you're saying, Jack, and I, and I. Acknowledge that it's, I would say especially true for me anyway, when it comes to signage. Now. I know Mayor Frida has his hand up, but I forgot to turn to Mr. Weisman. To um. To add whatever you'd like to add, Dan, to what Justin said um, about your, the. Concerns and issues that you raised, um, or that you flagged uh, in the memo.
Certainly, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize, Mr. Mayor, for cutting in front of you, not the guy you're supposed to cut in front of. The testimony and exhibits provided tonight by Mr. Fastman uh, were convincing to me. Um, none of the uh, data provided uh, indicated that there is a variance. Uh, Mr. Fastman did make a comment for staff to confirm. That the uh, light trespass is measured at the ground. That is confirmed. That is the way the ordinance perceives it. Uh, for the shopping center. I would ask um, if the internal illumination is approved. That the information that was presented as exhibits be put on the site plan. Um, in the form of a, a, a light study.
Right. Thank you. Mayor Frida?
Thanks, uh, just to maybe help us move along. I would like to suggest some things that we. Say that here's what we want. I think we. We need to add two more trees. They can move trees, but they need to put the other two trees that are missing back. They need to add the exit arrow wording to the D one sign by Walgreens. The transformer needs to be either landscaped, or there needs to be an art solution, but either one, I think is fine. Um. I, I'm okay with the, thanks for having been here. And on the back of the signs. And they can figure out how to make sure people see them or not, and I guess if people can't ever see them, maybe they'll come back and ask for something else to be on the back. But Eden's does own the property, so if I own the property, I think I want my name somewhere. Um, so I, I, anyway, I'm fine with the back of the sign saying, thanks for having been here, Eden's. And I'll hold off on the ID sign for now, to see if there's other comments on that, but. I mean, overall, I think it's a, I think it's a good proposal. Uh, and I think it's gonna look nice, and I'm happy to see that Eden's is. Doing things that they need to do at the shopping center to make it much more appealing and bring more uh, more businesses into that area. It's a, it's a good move for the town.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Um, other comments, other? Things to um, bring up as. Conditions? Mr. Cohen?
Just wanna suggest in terms of this question. Of uh, planting screenings. Versus artwork connected with the transformer. This could be something that could go to the landscape subcommittee. That basically, if the applicant wants to propose artwork. In lieu of plantings. Um, sort of let, let it not have to come back to the board.
Um. Great, and I, I, I would very much like to see this come to the landscape. Subcommittee, um, and I wonder how people feel about punting on the. Exact location of the. Tree le- relocation, and whether both of them actually need to be relocated, or, or whether relocating one will do in order to. Retain more of the. Potential down the road alley, and where the uh, two additional trees would go. Um. Is that something it's o- okay to? To um, delegate to the landscape subcommittee? Uh. Mr. Muller?
Could you say, uh, I wasn't quite, and, and could you repeat that?
So, in it.
Sorry.
Um, the, the question of exactly where. Um, well, first of all, whether or not both. Trees absolutely, that, that are um. Uh, proposed to be relocated, whether the both of them actually need to be relocated, or whether. They could get by with relocating one, so as to better. Um, retain the streetscape and alley that's supposed to extend along there. And to identify the location of the two additional replacement trees. Uh, or the replacement of two trees that have died, uh. The, since the plantings that were done right after um, Nomad Pizza was approved.
Okay, thank you.
Um. I'd be happy to make a proposal here tonight on all that if you wanted.
I, I would really rather not. I'd rather um. Discuss it at that um, subcommittee and, and um. Happy to hear variations on proposals at, at that point. I feel like um, we need to conclude tonight.
Louise, I'd like to. Suggest that when it comes to the trees.
Yeah.
The landscape subcommittee is one option, but. Uh, I, I don't know, I think I feel better if they just worked with the arborist and the town ar- municipal arborist figured it out. Right, he's.
Yeah, we would.
Lay out where they're gonna put the sign. And the transformer, he can readily say, you're gonna impact the root system or you're not, or this is gonna be whatever, and anyway.
Right. Right, and that's a really good point. We would absolutely want the input ahead of time from lands, from the. Arborist, uh, based on a site visit, and also. Um, we always have um. Dan Dobermelski at those meetings as well.
Okay.
But yeah, yeah. So it won't be us just uh, winging it. Um, okay, other thoughts? Would someone like to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lesko, yes?
Uh, just one quick clarification, would the uh. Uh, can, condition about the rear of the signs, is that just? Eden's can do that and, and let them, you know, figure it out, uh. Or would that also go to the landscape committee, or that, would that be working with staff?
Yeah, actually heard too, um, wa- was it your? David, were you suggesting that the landscape committee take that up, or was that somebody?
You just said not be permitted, tha- that's what David suggested.
I, I think that those signs should go away, there is. No justification under land use law for the variance. That is required to permit those signs, and my, there is no benefit to them. So to say that there's a benefit that outweighs the negatives. It's, I don't see how we can grant that variance, honestly. And I love the idea of letting the Arts Council look at the back of them, so that it's not just a blank surface.
Yeah, okay. I think I come down on that side myself. So I would include that among conditions. Um, understanding that Eden's can put its name in other places and. That would be fine.
That, that, that's advertising. They, they would need to get in the.
We can, we can remove it. We'll remove, we'll remove our names. It's okay.
Let's not permit it.
It's fine.
Sorry.
No big deal.
Justin, all right, thank you, Ryan. Justin, did you have something else?
No, no, I'm okay, thank you.
Okay.
Louise, want me to go?
More important, right?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, yeah, Jerry, go ahead of.
Okay.
Rememrise what you've.
Yeah.
Uh, before you do, um, Claudia? You're on mute.
Can we have a requirement that there's a sign installed when that Turun Road? Is. Open, that there must be a sign there? That is directing traffic, that is also partly a, an exit sign?
Uh, well, since that road isn't. Built yet, is that what you? You were talking about the road that connects uh, directly to Turun?
Yeah. Between the Alice and the other development. Uh, and, and the question really is, can we require? A sign, that a sign will be put there?
Well, we are proposing a sign there. A directory sign.
But you said, didn't you say you were coming back for that, because it's not? Oh, you didn't, okay, okay.
We just, we, we just probably wouldn't, and there's no reason. Not an entry, but we'd have a moveable. Complete.
Okay.
If that road does show up at one point, we would, we could then install a sign.
Okay.
Right, that was in your.
Well, one of the directory signs addresses what Claudia was, was concerned about. Correct?
She, she wants to make sure that there's directional signage that lets people know there's an exit. There.
Wouldn't that signage go in when that road goes in? That would be on the people to put the. I don't think it's, it's, well, it shouldn't be on Eden's to mark a road that's not on their property.
Well. I think, I think it shouldn't be part of this application, I agree. I think. Um, I think they'll wanna have signage that helps people understand there's another way to get off the site when the road is done. But it just, um. And, yeah, Dan, do you have a?
Yeah. This or? So there are uh, signs within the signing, uh, sign ordinance that are exempt from a permit, one of which is a directional sign. So they may not have to come back to the board if that directional sign meets the requirements of that signage.
Okay, so once that, let's revisit that, or count on the staff to revisit it when the road is built. Um, because I think what Claudia suggested makes a ton of sense. Um. And some of, and one of those signs might be on Eden property and. You know, facing one direction, and another might be on um. Uh. Barsky or Toll Brothers or whoever. You know, owns the other side of the street. Um, okay.
But, uh, 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 we imposing.
That not a part of this application, Jerry.
Okay. Well, I'll go through the conditions, at least is. For the board to consider. Um, D one, two, and three. Um. Nothing on the back, except the art, that the Arts Council can use it. Uh, the back of, it comes up with something. Um, the number of trees in the prior approval loss, which was two, should be replaced somewhere on the site. Um, in terms of that. That should be a decision, but the Arts Council, the lan- landscape subcommittee uh, should review that after input. From the arborist and the um, landscape architect. Um, screening between the bollards. Um, that also would go to the uh, landscape committee. Um. And David, the way you, you phrased it, I think it was, if they wanted to uh, do artwork, if Eden's wants artwork done instead. Um. That's the only circumstance in which we go to the uh, subcommittee?
Yeah, because we wanna know what the plants are. There are no plants shown currently.
Okay.
The landscape subcommittee wants to see. The plantings, if they do that.
Okay, great. And then the lighting information submitted should be um, put on the plans, this is what Dan suggested. Add an exit arrow sign by Walgreens. Um. And then the last, the, the major item, which we talked about mostly, is does the board wanna grant the variance for the new sign? And if it does, should there be store, uh, store names? And should the board? Somebody suggests micromanaging, say, provide any condition with respect to. Who those store names should be for. I know my reaction when, when um, Ryan said what the priority was. Um, it was for the stores which need the identification the least. The first was, was McCaffrey's. It was all the big stores. I mean, that was. That, that was the structure they were using. It seems to me, if you wanna do it. And everybody was talking about, yeah, that's a good idea, because of the stores on the Grover Park side need. You know, need some identification. And certainly, that's, that's right on, but the way this is set up with the store names, that's not happening. It's exactly the opposite, so does the board wanna get into that at all? So those are the issues. Do you want the, to grant the variance for the sign? If so, do you want the names? And do you wanna have any input on what? How you prioritize those names?
I personally would not want to try to dictate which names to put there at all, or how often they might be changed. Um, having said that, I would encourage the applicant, and I, this is not a condition, but encourage the applicant to. Um, pay particular attention to. Those uh, stores that are not visible from the street. And um. Yeah, but not as a condition, but as an encouragement. Uh, Mayor Frida, sorry to jump the line.
No, all good. No, I was gonna say, partly what I was gonna say is exactly what you said. How they determine what store names go on that sign, that's up to them, and we don't wanna touch that at all. That's kind of crazy. I mean, I think if you go by any kind of mall, strip mall, or whatever. It's usually the bigger stores that have their names there anyway. I mean, that's what. That's why they're your stores, right? So anyway. Um, I, I think we should add, just for the sake of deciding what we're doing with the identification sign. I'd like, I'd like to propose that we. And make it as a condition that we're approving it as presented.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that was the, of, of, of those who spoke up about it, that was the consensus, and so I um, I can. Um.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be a condition, though. It would be the grant of the.
It would be just.
So we would just grant the variance.
Okay. Um, just one question of the conditions you uh, listed, Jerry. Yes. This exit. Sign?
That's from.
I thought, I thought the comment was, if we were gonna have that writing on the, on the back. Of the directory sign, someone suggested to avoid having people go out the one way, that we should have an arrow. Telling them to turn, right? But if now we're saying, we're not gonna have anything on the back of the sign, I think that's required, right?
Okay, and Dan Weissman, you agree with that?
I would agree with that. The directional signage I was referring to is, is more uh. Lower level, I think it's a thirty inch maximum height, uh, specifically something that would say exit only, uh, wouldn't be part of a larger sign.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Muller, uh, there was one other um. Clerical condition, if we can add that in, uh, it's for uh, required signature format. Uh, to be added to the plans as well.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
And I had also asked that the um, site distance. Hatching on the plans. That there be a, there'd be an explanation, a legend, uh, indicating what those green and red areas mean.
Yep.
Okay. Is that it? Is that it?
That's, that's it for me.
Okay, having heard those conditions, would someone like to move approval of this application?
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Capizoli, seconded by Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Carrie, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
I guess. Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
It's approved.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will
See you at the landscape.
Some of you again at landscape subcommittee. All right. Thanks again, thanks for the patience.
Bye bye.
Bye.